When you find your phone, go ahead and put it on vibrate, or silent, or off, however you like to use it. Let me make sure I turn this sound off. All right, this meeting is now called to order. We'll have the application by Councilwoman Jackson.
Dear Father, we come to you in the most honored way we know how. Lord, thank you for all of your blessings, all your mercy, for your continued love that you share and continue to spread the gospel over all of us. For God, who be remiss if we did not ask for forgiveness for each and every one of our sins, sins of omission as well as commission, Lord, our sins we are aware of, sins that are so close to us that we don't even regard them as sin anymore. For God, renew a bright spirit in us. For God, lead us and guide us in your way, that we may do the things that are pleasing in your sight and yours alone. Lord God, we ask right now, in the name of Jesus, that your spirit would hover, that your spirit would abide, that your spirit would reign in this place, Lord God, and that nothing that is outside of you shall take place, Lord God. We ask for collective mind to be on one accord, in the name of Jesus, that we may do the things that are dutiful, that are purposeful, that are after your will and after your heart for the people of your city. Lord God, we just thank you that you're always close to us, that you hear our prayers, and that you would never turn your ear from us. Lord God, we thank you that we can call upon you in our time of need. I pray for each and every councilperson collectively and individually. I pray for our mayor, Lord God, our citizens, Lord God, and I just thank you that you have called us all to this place for such a time as this. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let's stand and pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to have approval of the minutes. Madam Clark, did you send us one set up? Usually the date is on there, Justice. Of course, we're filling in for the second. Okay. Oh, yeah. That's not on here, but yes, thank you.
I was going to say two dates you were about to pass.
You were about to pass me, okay. We have some fill-ins from this side, so don't bear with us. Go ahead, Madam Clark, please.
President Booey, Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Present.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
All right, Madam Clark, did you send the second set? And I'm missing, I know I saw the first set.
Just one set.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, councilpeople?
So.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Roll call, Madam Clark.
President Booey, Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm going to read the consent agenda, and y'all look at your consent agenda, and number four or five. All right, we had Councilwoman Youngblood, thank you for her, and she was looking at the notes that I sent to President Booey. I sent him some notes, and then, you know, they got caught up in there. So strike number four and five from the consent agenda, all right? And I'm going to read, and I'm going to read off the rest. They were not meant for the consent agenda. They're going to be on discussion at work session or either in executive session. Okay. Oh, yeah, they won't appear anyway. Tonight, anyway. All right, Councilwoman, you had your hand up before. Our, Thomas, you had your hand up? Okay. All right, number one, request for Councilwoman Maya Jackson, on behalf of the city council for information from the mayor, to include purchase orders and invoices. And you all let me know if this is not correct. Purchase orders and invoices for expenditures. Number two, to honor the event with the City of Selma Public Buildings, and attorney Jimmy Nun, and allow council to set up and man the event to reimburse Councilwoman Angela Benjamin, her hotel room, which quickly approved by council president prior to the November 30th trial. I think that's, you should read something else. Council members, Councilwoman Jackson?
Council, Councilwoman Prothean, I want to make you aware that actually we have received that information regarding purchase orders and invoices.
Okay.
It was actually the request for monthly expenses, including current contracts, any monthly contracts and agency agreements.
Okay, monthly expenses, including expenses, including contracts?
Yes, my current contracts and agency agreements. And those two years' worth of expenditures and invoices does include that, but it's broken out by department. So if I could have a condensed spreadsheet, that would be more helpful along with the contracts. Because if people could see maybe one, for us send four thousand papers, and then three thousand documents later, you'll see the same thing. So I don't want to count in twice.
Okay, councilmembers, please strike out in that sentence, "to include purchase orders and invoices for expenditures", to read monthly expenses, including contracts and agency agreements in a condensed spreadsheet for the last two years. Is that correct, Councilwoman?
Well, actually, the fiscal year is fine.
Okay.
If it's what we're getting.
No. Councilwoman?
Number three, have you submitted documentation about your expense for your trip to California?
Yes, for quite some time, it's been a while.
Okay, have you submitted your lodging receipts while you was out there?
Yes, I have the email out forward again.
I'm going to ask that number three, she taken off?
Okay.
We have further discussion.
All right, councilmembers, you have two left. Anyone else? All right, roll call, Madam Clark.
President Booey, Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
I'm going to have to speak.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, I don't see any citizens' requests on this form. I just want to make sure that we, because we do not have an administrative assistant, I want to make sure that we did not miss anyone that submitted a request to come before the council tonight, in a timely manner. All right, we're going to the mayor's report. Is there anyone here from the mayor's office to report for the mayor? Oh, that's me. Thank you. We're going to, we're going to thank you so much. You're acting as administrative assistant and clerk. Thank you so much. She's been making copies for us too, as well, so thank you. We're going to go back and for the approval of the regular agenda. Madam Clark, roll call.
Motion and a second.
Councilwoman Jackson? Councilwoman Youngblood, a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. President Booey, Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, now, there are your office. All right, I know that Attorney Nun said that he was going to be here, and he may be on his way up, so when he comes, someone let me know. If he doesn't sit here, someone let me know, and we'll bring him. We'll go ahead and bring him up, okay? Current building, public buildings process, we talked about this on last night, and Councilwoman Thomas?
I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
Is we going to approve the last meeting agenda that we had minutes?
We did.
We did. I missed that, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Was he able to cast a vote on that? Did you want to vote on it, Councilwoman?
I was wrong, because I wasn't.
Okay, would you go ahead and change his vote?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
No problem. Got it. There he is, right on cue, I was just about to move on. All right, we'll get, get him just a minute. While Attorney Nun is getting ready, Councilwoman Thomas, your item was placed for public buildings for that event on Saturday was placed on consent agenda. So you let me know after Attorney Nun was finished, if you had anything else you needed to say about that. Attorney Nun?
Thank you, City Council. Let me say good evening to you.
Good evening.
I think you took a few items off the consent agenda. They left only, what was it, one and two? Four and five was taken off?
Yeah, it was not meant to be on.
Okay.
It wasn't meant to be on.
Okay. Do you have mics?
We have mics.
Okay, well, I'll try to be. I'll try to be very loud. Well, we have to let me say good evening to you again.
Good evening.
Let me move very quickly, we just only have a few items that were discussed on last night. Resolution 115-18/19, did we place that one on consent?
No.
That's a surplus property.
We did ask.
This is a resolution to declare the surplus property, personal property, belonging to the City of Selma. This property is within the cemetery department under Mr. Peddaway. He has submitted the surplus property to the clerk's office. You will see the attachment, he's requesting that this piece of property be surplus by the city council. Now, there was some questions last night as it relates to how we're going to dispose of the property, so we do have our city clerk. If you recall, last night, we mentioned gov. deals, and we mentioned that it may, I don't know, do we still have gov. deals or not?
We do.
We do? Okay. But do we, do we have to go through gov. deals? Or we just, I think somebody said, maybe bid?
We have in the past bided ourselves with at least three proposals. We have in the past bided ourselves with three proposals, and selected one that offered the most.
So it's really left up to the city council how you want to dispose of the property, but this is just declaring a surplus property. And this is resolution 115-18/19. And the property is on the, on the.
Attention. On the declaration of the properties, surplus property, Councilwoman, how do you feel? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? And we're just declaring these properties surplus properties. That's what we're doing in this motion.
In this motion, we're not determining how we're going to.
No determination of how we're going to go about the process, the bid process. Okay.
You want to call? President Booey, Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw? Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
The next item, did you pass anything about the film permit?
No, I did not.
For the city council, you have an application, this is Cold Water Media. If you recall, on our last city council meeting, if I'm correct, we voted and approved Cold Water Media for a film permit based on the application that they had submitted. It might have been the, maybe a month, was the last meeting?
Oh, meeting before that.
Meeting before that. But the film permit was to decline in the City of Selma. Date of production was going to be 11/14/18. They had, if I'm correct, they paid the fees, the application fees and everything, Ivy?
Yes, sir.
It's attached right there, and they also provided their insurance. But Ms. Ivy Harrison did receive a letter from Cold Water Media. Unfortunately, they had accounts for their shoot due to bad weather on that day, and poor health with some crew, so they would like to reschedule it for December the 12th, which is approximately a month from the date in which it was scheduled. All of the shooting and script that they have provided to the city council, and the application is the same. So they asking the city council to approve the film permit for December the 12th.
Councilmembers of the council members?
Is this the film company that President Booey says Executive would only gave approval, like they're rumors, to come back and ratify and firm that at the next meeting?
I'm not real sure. Do we have a minutes? I think I remember presenting this to the city council decent, let's go check real quick.
I mean, you recall, the film company needed. And they needed it by that Monday, you was going to have the council go to that Tuesday.
That's not the one.
That's not the one.
Yeah, the filming date here was Wednesday, November 14th. So we would have met that Tuesday on 13th, so we approved that Tuesday on 13th.
I think I was media.
And that's the other one? Did we approve that one?
No.
Right, I know you.
We can prove that personally.
Right, I know you, it's the one that you were asking.
So they didn't have to attend.
Cold Water Media.
No, I'm talking about the one that President gave authorization for. This Attorney Nun is going to come and ratify and firm it at our next council meeting.
Yeah, there was two of them, we presented, if I'm correct, I thought we presented two of them at the city council meeting. They won't present one? Yeah, we presented two at the city council meeting. Let's see here, ratify and firm and approve permit for Bright alone. So we did, we did approve that one. Now, that was the one that was had on Monday, that was before the Tuesday. And then once we had council meeting, we also approved this one here, Cold Water, for Wednesday, after the council meeting. But due to bad weather, they had to cancel the one that was on Wednesday.
All right, councilmembers, is there a motion?
So, second.
All right, further discussion? Madam Clark?
Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Prothean Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw? Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
All right, Justice Attorney?
I was trying to look for our, the next item is our judges, trying to see what.
They're here.
They're here, well, okay, we, I was about to say something. And we also have our prosecutor, Ed Green. And we have our judges, presiding judge, Judge Joseph Haygood, and we also have our other municipal judge, which is Major Madison, so we're glad to see them. As we discussed on last night, and I've had a few councilmembers and everyone calling me today, but I do want to just kind of go back to explain that judges are appointed on a two-year basis. If you recall, Judge Haygood was already appointed on a two-year term from 2016 to 2018. Our other judge in 2016 was? Prince Chestnut, Representative Prince Chestnut. He resigned in February of this year. And Judge, city council, you appointed Judge Major Madison to fill the remaining of his term that would have went to 2018. He's been in office, Judge Haygood, Judge, when did you start? Because I think someone said you went all the way back to 2010.
2008.
2008, ooh, that's a long time. So he was here in 2010, and Judge Major Madison came in February, correct?
February 13th or 14th.
February 13th, so he's been there seven, eight months with us. As I stated, the magistrate's office, we do not have them in the house tonight. And then we have our prosecutor, Ed Green. Ms. Bernetta Perkins is also our other prosecutor over there. But the appointments are up for the judges, as I stated to you on last night, that they have two-year appointments. They serve until they are reappointed or until their successor is appointed. Literally, it is left up to the city council. There were some concerns that came up last night about the audit. There were some other concerns that came up, and I told you that we would have the judges here tonight. If y'all would like to ask questions tonight of the judges, they are here to answer any question. They may have some statements that they want to mention to you concerning a few things, like I said about the audit and things. And then it will be left up to the city council whether or not y'all want to take action tonight. As it relates to the judges, it's left up to the city council. You can reappoint, question was asked last night, well, do we have to reappoint, or can we get another judge? That's up to the city council. If you would like to, they have served their term. They, from the information that I received from them, they are requested to be reappointed. But you can appoint anyone that you like in that position. If you want to go through an interviewing process, or you want some people to submit applications, or you want to reappoint, however, that process will be left up to the city council. It will be your desire. If you don't want to rush into it and make a decision now, you can wait till the next meeting before you can take it to committee. Some people say they may want to see it in committee, however, that's left up, that's the council's prerogative. But since the judges are here, I do would like for them, I would like for them to come up.
Come on up, Judge.
And for the ones who do not know you, y'all come up here and introduce yourself, and if this council have any questions, they're judges, so they grown, and they can speak for themselves.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So y'all have questions?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yeah, let me get back out in the bar for a second. Look, since I've been in office, one of the concerns we've been having is the backlog on your docket. And another thing is, we've been having problems with magistrates over there, like keep them going, workers and all. What is it, what would it takes for us to get the court system to run a lot more smoother than it's been going, because, you know, we have a lot of complaints. Sometimes a magistrate calls, and they need more workers over there, and the backlog's behind, you know. What would it takes to get that court system to run a little bit smoother than it's been running lately?
Of course, backlog's a concern, aren't we? We're trying to enable a system, FDAs in a more time amount, get them picked up. We're going to try to start implementing any. Using what we've explored before, where you do the bond notification process, you get your financing involved, especially getting people to court. Couple of that, all of them, so, for, can't take their checks, then we have to go get them. And that creates other issues, manpower, you know, you have to. Officer, they'll go pick them up, execute FDAs, we're trying to address those issues. And speaking, we made at least once and not twice a month. Away from, before I go to the officer, I'm going to discuss the issue.
My goodness. I'd like to expand on that asset, if you may. May I, please, go ahead.
And speak loud, so the audience can hear you.
Yeah, come on to the mic.
You asked a two-fold question, you asked a two-fold question concerning backlog of cases and turnover among the magistrates, is that correct?
Correct, and it works and pluck, because I went there like two.
Those two questions are interrelated, they're interrelated in the following respect. When I was appointed judge in February, we had a staff of a chief clerk and three magistrates in the office of municipal court, magistrate's office. Since I was appointed, and almost immediately after I was appointed, the chief clerk resigned, one of the magistrates resigned, a second magistrate was terminated. So we had a turnover within less than six months of mine becoming judge of three people, which means we had in place all those people. We have a new chief clerk, and the person, Courtney Nelson. Ms. Nelson's doing an awesome job, I even have on my phone, which I turned off at the recommendation of the acting president. I turned my phone off, but I have on my phone, if anyone wants to see it, two commendations from individual citizens of Selma, thanking the chief clerk for not only her efficient and effective processing of their question concerning or complaint. One of them gave her roses, another one brought her a certificate, someone, I believe, is from the hearing impaired community, or deaf community, gave her a certificate for the outstanding work she's done. Now, I know that's just one person, but that's been a change that I hadn't seen in the entire time, going back to 2010, when I was first named prosecutor, that we have an individual bringing flowers to our magistrate, she played this case, and a several giving her a certificate of appreciation all within a week. I'm talking about a week apart. She said she had other commendations before now, but she didn't have that paper with her handy. We also had, if you all recall, two positions defunded by the council, which means we've got three people, one in training, and a new chief clerk. And the only person in that office was there when I first got here as judge, is one of the magistrates. So we've got one person who's been there longer than the other two, and we found out that there were boxes of case records under two of the three desks of the people who left, boxes. So those are being worked, as the chief clerk, new clerk, chief clerk, is training a new employee. And we could actually use another person in that office to answer the phone, to deal with things like calling people to pay money they owe. I heard some of that discussion circulating, and I think it's not a bad idea. But we have personnel issues ongoing. The largest part of it is due to turnover. The other part of it is due to us discovering after those three people left that there was a workload that none of us saw power in.
But two minutes. Now, we said we're not going to mess with anything in, what I said. That position, the funding, that fund was put into the issue. Or them two funds can be reinstated, I think them two funds went into, what we call?
Set aside.
It's set aside, so they didn't like it, they set aside. So if y'all need to hire someone, we need the court system up and running. So please, hires want to qualify to do that, let's move forward with that. Another thing, Councilwoman, you should have brought up an issue that happened in Montgomery, and I hope and pray that we can use that, that, that amnesty, uh, plan. Have you ever looked into that?
Yeah, we, we now have, we've done it before.
Okay, but can we, we can.
When I was prosecuting.
Right, but can we do it again soon?
I'll see what I, just, just as I said.
Right, right.
Yes, it's definitely on the agenda, long ago, the issues were dealing with.
Right.
You know, the stacking issue has been ongoing since something there, 2010, seeing that a turnover rate, you know, and some of us do, some of us do to the right, not the chief partner yet, but the magistrates and other parts have. It's a little low rate compared to surrounding areas.
Right.
The amnesty issue, something that needs to be addressed. That all. And they need more help. So if we can get some of those positions back, it'll be something we can definitely be able to pay direct.
If I'm, if I'm not out of line, I think we all agree that it's okay for them to go ahead and look forward to, for the two workers, if the fund is there.
If you all would draft us something, so we can look at.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could give, give us something, if we need a visual, I would do a call. They would be working part-time, full-time, we need to see all that, okay?
How many do you see y'all already have, one in training now?
You know, one in training, chief clerk, chief magistrate, and then another court.
So y'all just, how many y'all need?
One, one.
We can make it, one more.
Okay, we can, we can give the president, President Prothean, let's give that to us, and see if we move forward with that.
This additional worker employee is to accommodate the citizens' grant and making payments, and helping with the backlog?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Most definitely.
And to assist in implementing other programs. And as before, maybe be able to explore the possibility of extending pre-trial version type programming to city court and that sort of thing. It's just hard to do for a staff we have now. Because we've got to use them just to keep the court going, to the best we can.
Well, one of the city employees, we want you all to knock on the I T door for me and ask them to please bring the microphone, his new battery. No matter, he said, oh, he had batteries. We have some. Can one of y'all find out what size batteries they need? We'll look in our drawer. And we'll look in our drawers, see if we have some, we, we usually have batteries. Ask them what size of batteries, I, I don't like this back and forth thing. We can hardly hear you, uh, Judge Higgin, and, um, people are listening, and it's important that they be able to hear.
Yes, ma'am, it is, I can speak up.
Okay, and we can get some batteries. Councilwoman Thomas, you have your hand up.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
I, I asked a question, I had a citizen to ask me this, and I, I never knew this. In the magistrate office, you come out to sign a warrant, do the witnesses have to be sworn, the person that signed the warrant have to be sworn in?
Yes, ma'am, the person who comes to get the warrant.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, they have to be sworn in.
So when they come to do...
It's taken under oath, yes.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions, uh, questions about the, Councilwoman Jackson?
Okay, actually, um, I have a couple of questions about what we just discussed, and then if you don't mind, you know, if it's the pleasure of the council, I would like to go ahead and address those agenda items while we have them here and that. Okay, what number, I think, that's one. Fifteen, number fifteen, okay, okay. Um, first of all, um, thank you guys for coming this evening. Um, if, if I can count correctly, we, you were stating that we have three administrative personnel, uh, in the office.
Chief clerk, two extras.
Yes, ma'am.
Total of three. Um, do you know how many individuals work in the district court's office?
Two.
There's two in the magistrate's office, and we've got all the other people that help in the courtroom to do other stuff.
Well, like I said, that, that helped. Um, but there, there are actually two people in the court, and we, they have court Monday through Thursday. How many times do we actually, whole court? Twice.
Six times, six, six times a month.
Six times a month. And so, do you think that there are some things, um, I know that we have a computer system, which we did have at one time, that, uh, you actually get in orders in, and that can print the docket, that is so much greater. And I know you recall, um, the time when we didn't have that system, Judge Higgin, and we were actually finding cases. Uh, but I, I want to say, um, though it may be, I think, um, when we talk about public safety, um, they separate the judicial system, and they, they say they stand alone, because they can't be influenced by police officers. They have to stand alone, and the chief cannot come and give them directives, am I correct? And so, it, it is a part of public safety, but it's not actually public safety. Would that be a fair statement?
That's, that's a fair statement.
That's a fair statement. Okay, so, I mean, we've made a decision that we want to put freeze on heroin. We don't have, know where our funding is. We, we, we don't have the liberty of seeing as much as we need to see. And so, that's why when, um, Councilman Johnson actually stated that, um, he thought it would be the consensus not to put... I, I should, I had no, that that wasn't my opinion, because what I believe that we could do is they can, if the court system, the county court system can operate with two, um, individuals, we have three. We're not having the court as often as they are having court, and they do cover the entire county, um, including, um, misdemeanor and felony cases, that I would try to see if we could do something. I know both of you are all in place, and you have great ideas, and so you would, um, come up with something that, that we can be more efficient without having the labor and manpower currently. And then after stating that, um, that you all want to report that at our, Judge?
I just, I think we handle more cases than district court as far as misdemeanors and crimes concerned. We do not handle too more civil cases, which Judge Aron from, around this district court.
Or, or, um, preliminary hearings, felony cases, bond hearings, first calls, all those things that we're in court. I just left court, and I'm extremely tired, left from being there eight forty-five this morning to a little after four this afternoon. And so, I, I understand, um, just how, um, long a docket can be, and just how much work that it goes into, and, and I just believe that we could be more efficient. Those are just my thoughts, it's going to be the council's decision, but I don't think we're just laying off seventy, nearly seventy people that we have the money to bring on one or two. Uh, but I have discussed with you previously that, um, having someone in the office to collect would be a great idea.
Yes, so I understand why all the layoffs, just saying, we want to do amnesty court, we want to do other things over, well, beyond what we're doing now. We do need...
Yes, and, and, Judge, and I, I guess I don't relate to the court, but I know you were there when we've tried amnesty court. When I worked alongside, it didn't fare very well. I think we, we've tried it before, it, um, and that it may have been because we didn't publicize it, um, well, but it just didn't, didn't fare well, and maybe that's something that we could do. But I did want to talk about the municipal intercept program, because, um, that's something that Susan and I, and I've been talking about at least the last two years, and I had an opportunity to speak with both of you. I think Judge Higgin in court last week, or the week before last, I got a chance to run over and speak with him about municipal intercept. And I think though that could, um, assist in the collection of cases, because oftentimes, we have individuals that have fines or court costs that just never show back up, and you don't have the manpower to keep calling, um, like I did with your court. And, um, you, you could attest to all the accommodations that, um, were made to assist clients in actually paying, paying. But, um, they have a training on December the fifth. I think that, and it's only a two-hour training, it's free, it's at the Leeds office in Montgomery. Of course, we would have to register to be on the list, because there are only thirty-five slots available. I actually contacted the municipal intercept program and asked could they come down and present and possibly do a training here? And they said, no, if they open it up to us, then of course they would have to open it up to everyone else. But this would assist in ensuring that we got some of those payment. Anytime that, um, funding came through the state of Alabama, um, they would have an opportunity to collect it and send it to the court city of Selma, um, for old, back old fines and court costs. And I've seen this happen on the county side, so many times, I hear people coming in, what happened to my money? Because of my check didn't come through, or something happened, and then we're called and cut it down, and it had been intercepted. Of course, it's not a municipal intercept, but it is a, um, similar program. And so, I would ask that you all at least look into that. The other thing that I wanted to discuss, and, um, I think Attorney Nine made me aware on last night, that you all had never received a copy of this forensic report that was done. Actually, the official date was this matter coming to be heard the seventeenth day of August twenty-ten and the twenty-fifth day of August twenty, twenty-seventh. And it was entered, um, the twenty-second day of September. Um, it's a fascinating report about some of the findings and non-compliant things that were going on in the court. And because you all haven't had a copy, and because there are, um, I don't want to say allegations, there are conversations regarding some of the same things being found. Um, actually, when I read through our current audit, um, this year's twenty-seventeen audit, not the municipal, um, forensic audit, municipal court, cause this was all in the reports audit, I'm talking about the entire city's audit. Some of the same findings, um, that are in this are also in that, um, twenty-seventeen finding. Um, and some of the same findings for twenty-sixteen are still there. So, um, I would like for you all to have a copy of this, so we can go through it to ensure that the things that are being consecutively brought up are being addressed. I understand that you've stated, stated the turnover, and so this is not to point fingers at anyone, is to ensure that we're not putting ourselves in a position that we may be liable, or that there may be, um, an opportunity that we'll lose twenty-nine thousand dollars from either mismanagement or, um, stealing. Um, and the individuals identified here had to pay it back. Now, what they, they said it was mismanagement or stealing, but it was twenty-nine thousand, nearly thirty thousand dollars gone. And that, um, audit was done from October one, two thousand and eight, through June thirty of two thousand and nine. So I would like, um, for you all, and we don't have a code, so I can't give you a copy, but if you, if you, um, ask Attorney Nine, can you get them a copy of this? Okay, so if you get a copy of this, so we can make sure, because I'm hearing some of the same things, it's actually written in our report, our audit report, that some of the same things are going on. And then, of course, you know, you have attorneys that talk to you all, and so when they see me in court, they talk, and some of their, the same concerns that are addressed in here, um, are also being brought back up. Not pointing a finger at anyone, just saying these are matters. Um, and actually, I brought to the council last night that I thought that, or I wanted to ask, was it necessary that, um, we continue to have two judges? Because administratively, um, and for oversight purposes, if the, the presiding judge is the department head, I think that, um, we need to make sure that certain things are taking place. And, and judges, I maybe, I just have a greater, greater respect. I think they just have the, the authority and the power to make sure that those things are being done. I know when Judge Armstrong calls me, I, I jump into, like a soldier, jump into places. So I think those things need to be addressed, and maybe we should look at possibly, um, looking at one judge. It may not be the consensus of the council at this time, but, um, I would rather do that and continue to have these type of findings, because we have part-time individuals, they have greater responsibilities, they have other court hearings and other clients, and they really can't handle the load that is going on there.
Okay, um, that's a lot.
It is.
So, two things, right, right before you, Councilwoman Short, I want to make sure that they heard, uh, a couple, a couple of things. Did you, we paid a lot of money for our auditors, a lot of money, we paid on double what was in the budget. Um, in order for them to do this report, I would assume they would have come to you all, asked for information, and of sort. Did the auditors come see you all when they made this report to us inside of our audit?
First time I heard about it was when I was presenting for the council.
It was your first time hearing about it today?
No, two weeks ago.
A couple of weeks ago. So, uh, y'all, Judge, tell me yes or no, did they come see y'all?
No.
No, okay, it's a, okay. We paid a lot of money for our auditors, and I, I wanted to, uh, ask you that, Councilwoman Short.
I spent some time in the magistrate office, and I found that there was a backlog of cases. People just don't show up for court.
Yeah.
And therefore, I do think the amnesty program is a program that can work, provided it's promoted. And I think that is the reason they're going to stray here in Selma, it wasn't promoted the way it should have been. I would highly recommend that this amnesty program be undertaken, because the citizen don't realize there's a bitch want out there for them, which just compound their problem. And I do think if this education of our citizens about them being in violation of the law, some of them would be ready to come in to make payments. So to get rid of this outstanding, uh, citation that they have been hit with by the Selma police department, I highly recommend the amnesty be undertaken. If you get just two people to come in to pay their bill, you had more than you did before. Now, two judges, I do think that was a wise decision by two administrations back. It was the common, it was too time pursuing for one person. And the two judges have worked, the two judges will continue to work, and I highly support two judges. Uh, I don't know what you guys think about it, I think you all compromise each other, and I think the time-wise has been okay for both of you. Give me your opinion, if there was just one judge had, had, you think it would be too stressful?
Full-time or full-time?
Full-time.
Full-time would be a...
No, a part-time judge can handle it.
He'd live a point for a four-year term, and for what you pay both of us, I don't think you'd be able to get anybody to do it.
So I think you were looking at a wise decision, I guess, I, I think you were looking at a wise decision, time lapse, I don't want to judge it, but for me, if I can fight him back, Selma police, if they broke, that's not no problem.
No, I do, and Councilwoman, on there's enough work over there, you know, a full-time judge, it's just, it's, it's the battle scene. I don't know, you're going to be able to...
And I like to...
Pay one judge, you know, money to where you don't have to practice law anymore, aren't living it out.
Yes, cause you were saying you have to leave your practice.
I want to respond to, to Councilwoman, uh, Short's point two. Um, the matter of two judges can be considered an accommodation in the following respects. Salary, time on task, we both are still in the private practice of law. There is no way either one of us could work for either of the part-time judges salary on a full-time basis. And I think you all know that, I don't think that's news to anyone on, on, on the council.
Go ahead, someone accept it.
Hi, hi, however, if you have a full-time person paid at a fair salary, I emphasize the word fair, fair to the council, that to the citizens of Selma, and fair to the person, then that person can dedicate his or her efforts every day, every week, every month, all year, to making sure that the court runs well. It's back to a question of what's fair compensation. I'm at a point in my practice where I can do either, I can work part-time as a judge and continue to practice law, or I can quit one or the other, or both. That's where I am at this point in my life. But, but you want to pay particular attention to what you expect out of two part-time judges or a full-time judge, cause it's going to go a long way towards deciding whether or not your decision, whatever it is, is a, is a successful decision.
Technically, you're right, one, the judge is going to apply due to his own need, so he can't complain about the base pay. Two, this is something a judge might to do, and they're not making their livelihood out of it, we all know this. Three, you have to, I'm talking about the city now, in municipal courts, which is a separate government entity from the legislative branch, which is us, and the executive branch, which is the mayor. You know, once we appoint you guys, you guys, uh, Thomas, you're on your own. There's no control by this council, there's no control by the executive branch, but, but one thing is a fact, you have a responsibility to the people, and when you are, and when you don your role, and you dispense justice, and the people don't make payments, then that is an obligation not only to the municipal court, it's an obligation to the city. And the people deserve everything that they get, and this city is stressed with money. And the municipal court is doubly stressed, because people are not paying the citation that they have been cited for. Once again, I think the two judges is the best resource for the city, I think the two judges is the best revenue for the city, and I would hope and pray that this council do not try to dismantle that.
And Councilman Short, if I didn't make it clear, I wholeheartedly agree with you about the necessity to collect the money to the city. I think that an amnesty program can work. I was part of one that I think was successful on the whole as a prosecutor. I think the intercept program work, anything we can do to, to, to do that, to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the court is important. We have to be careful though, because in a town called, uh, Ferguson, Missouri, the powers that be in that city had attempted to, well, not even attempted, they actually achieved, uh, turning the court into a money-making situation, and the federal government said, you can't do that, it's unconstitutional. So that's, that's my only, my only concern. Should we collect money? We have to collect money, because people, the, the expense, the fines and court costs assessed need to be collected. Otherwise, people lose faith and confidence in the ability of the court to get anything. I happen to think the biggest travesty in city court is the failure of people to show up every day for court. I think that's the biggest travesty. They're in effect saying, we don't have to listen to you, we could care less about coming, cause you're not going to do anything about it.
That's the biggest problem in getting to where you have adjudicated somebody sometimes, cause they just don't show up.
And there is an issue with wars, which means it's what a city that constantly has not been collecting. So my point is, is that if they don't show up, there's an obligation they need for their family. And they, and they, they know, uh, finance that they're not paying, and just take it as adverse, adverse action on the municipal court.
But they have to feel, they have to feel that if they don't show up even for an amnesty program, there will be consequences. That's where the city court and the police department have to work hand in glove to make sure that law enforcement isn't, the law is enforced.
Law of amnesty is, is anything that's people out there, uh, non, non-responsive, found this man is cited for. Once again, the municipal court, municipal money, the municipal court, or what you just said, John, you just may have to... this may have to go there. And I think once you get it, they're going to be forced to adhere and try to get these, these were the sites into the courts. And, 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 you know, just make sure that what is connected.
Yes, yes.
Agreed.
What is all, what is all our problems?
That's where the, uh,
Agreed.
Addressing the FDA issue. It's been ongoing since you've been prosecutor. We've been addressing that issue for a whole time. I've been, um, thing like I said, we've just known and explored it one point in time by the bond. So we're going to go ahead and start trying to implement that program so that will be a, so the bondman will be involved. So then they have to go pick up their client and they've got to pay the city money because they didn't show up for court. And that's, I don't think that's ever been done in city court, even when I was a practicing attorney over there.
I think you guys explained, rather than us, you have a lot of the constitution to record. And then this council for any support it can give you guys to record, try to do some of this for us. I think, I think it can be done.
And that's where we need to have counselwoman Jackson's, counselwoman Youngblood's intercept program. So when we get these people in, we get a client and they've been adjudicated and they owe us one, then we don't have to sit, you know, pay dockets and have people calling them and trying to, act as our own collection agency, we have third parties helping us do it.
Okay, go ahead. Did you guys ever get that computer software that was ordered several years ago? Ever was received?
Yes, I'm, you.
Honor?
Thanks to your assistance, you came on, you came on the court, not sure we were getting it.
Thank you.
Before we go to counselwoman Jackson, you all are making a case really for the need for more help. This backlog, you're going to have to come from under cover on the backlog. Not only do we have people who are not paying, we also have people who are coming to court who have already paid. They've taken off their jobs, they come to court, they've already paid. There's a warrant still in the system somehow with the police department. And so they're being, they're being stopped or picked up or saying, come to court. So you all are making a good case for needing a person there to at least, at the bare minimum, help you diminish this backlog. The requirements for a person like this, I hope they are minimal. I don't know what it takes, but are the requirements minimal? Because we do have agencies that help, uh, that help, and positions to help out in areas like this.
I think it could be done as a clerk composition instead of actually making them a full, long magistrate. Maybe part-time for a certain period of time until it's taken care of.
And before giving my answer, I would want to talk with the chief clerk. She's the one that has to supervise that person no matter what they do. But I don't have a disagreement in the whole, in the main with Judge Hager's point. Just for giving.
And, uh, I'm going to give you half of what I'm asking, and I'll get your aid. The other thing, I'm glad that counselwoman Jackson and counselwoman Short said because it's important. You all are stationed at the police department and sometimes folks get you mixed up and think you're the same entity. We make the laws, y'all interpret it, and you administer, recommend it. And so what we're saying here, anything that we're saying here, we're making suggestions and recommendations, but we're also concerned about the, uh, the collections or the lack thereof, or where is the money? We're concerned about that part because that is where we're really connected at. We definitely can't run your office, but I think together, we can put our heads together and figure out something that works for the citizens, that works for the system that you all have in place. And it seems like you all are trying to correct some things. And so let's just make it clear that there is a separation here. That people need to, it's, it's just like this council chamber is in the city hall. It doesn't have to be, y'all are over at SPD, don't have to be, you just have to have, have an office over there. So I just want to make it sure, clear that we keep that separate. Counselwoman Jackson?
You have taken a look at this summary of the examiner's report. And this was about eight months. And we're talking about fair pricing. And so if we're losing thirty thousand in eight months, if we pay those two salaries with additional thirty thousand over a year and then lose thirty thousand in eight months, I think that would be fair compensation. I think that would ensure the additional accountability, the additional administrative person to ensure that things like court receipts not being deposited into separate accounts and cash funds not being handled in accordance with the minimum court accounting requirements and monthly remittances to other agencies not agreeing with monthly receipts and relating remittances to other agents, not being done in a timely manner and lack of clear documentation of the judge's intentions concerning disposition of cases. And court fines not being collected for some cases in amounts collected by the court that were not posted and deposited and accounted for properly. Lack of controls over parking tickets, booking, books, parking tickets issued, the parking fines. I'm big, this is not about you all, I'm big on policies and procedures. So if we're bringing someone in and we're training them, we're training them off currently knowledge. This is the way we do some things, this is the practice that we have. But we do not have a manual in place and say, this is how, this is handled every day. Whether I'm here or not, you take this, your first week, this is your new bible you're here and where you, you, so. Those are some of the things that if we had someone that was full-time that understood the administrative side as a department head, that's what I'm looking at. I'm not just looking at the judge, I'm looking at the department head. If, if the council, if it was our appointment or our desire or even our ability to change the department head, judge stand along, excuse me, your, your, um, what, what's your judge? No, the judge position. Presiding judge, you can still have a presiding judge, but make the clerk the, the department head because you can't, you're not, they're not citing you all when they give this. They're citing the chief clerk, but the department head is over the chief clerk. And you're, they're part-time, so how are you going to make sure that things are done correctly when you're only there half the time or, you know, twice a week or six times a month? It's just not the most efficient way. But, you know, I lean to the council. But this was eight months. We haven't had it since twenty ten. How much has, have we lost since then? That's my concern because it's been cited that the deposits are not being made in a timely manner, the deposit are not adding up, they're not consistent. I mean, those same findings are in that audit, so where's the money? And so you don't have to address that, those are rhetorical questions, but those are my concerns.
I'd like to look at the board first.
Yes, and I think you should. And I think that immediately, because you're the department head, immediately after this report came out, not only should this council receive the, anyone that had the findings in the report should have been, it should have been discussed with that department. You know, but that's day-to-day operations and we're not over there.
But I know one of the things we've already done, trying to alleviate that, is that going to require each clerk, key, old school, paper ledger, all the money they bring in. And then they're going to give it to the chief clerk at the end of the day and then she's going to take that, put it into another ledger and then see if it all adds up during the day before we bring it over here to finance.
I think we can have a better discussion, you all get to see the report that it's made on.
Okay.
Yeah, are there any other questions?
I have one other comment. I did go, I did go online, not for the forensic audit, but the entire audit, the eighty-eight page audit. And I didn't read, I'll be honest, I didn't read the eighty-eight pages yet. But I did search out the portion that applies to the court, to the municipal court. And Judge Hager and I were in my office together at that time going through that. So all of the issues you've raised are very legitimate and very concerned, of a great deal of concern to us. And we've already taken some proactive steps, especially just as I outlined with the ledger. But this, this is important to all of us and especially the citizens of Selma. That's why I mention them as often as I can because they're the reason I'm here and I'm pretty sure the rest of us too. So we definitely take this very seriously, very seriously.
Thank you guys for your courage, I appreciate it. Counselman, run down. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm good.
Yeah, I was just going to pass a question about the appointment of the judges. We have other attorneys that desire interference then. So can we favor this till we come up with a plan and give our attorney the option to apply if they would like?
You do make that a big deal, I thought you were. But attorney Nunn did explain that we could, we could do interviews if we like, we could do applications. He gave us all the options, so I, I don't think there will be a vote tonight.
Oh, okay.
I don't think anyone is ready to put a motion on the floor.
All right, okay, never mind.
Yeah, and so there will be further discussion. In the meantime, we still have two judges, they're the same two people. Any more discussion for the judges? Okay, um, president. The exact date, what's the exact end date, attorney?
It would, I think they were appointed from November to September thirty-fourth. Take this commission fiscal year, the city fiscal year.
Oh, so in this October, I mean, September thirty?
Yes.
Okay, so September thirty, so it was already.
Their term expired, however, they will serve until the successor is appointed. So, so that it's, it's like that so that the judicial branch of government continues on.
Okay, so counselmen, if you could be prepared to discuss this in the next work session and bring your ideas on how you would like to move forward, whether you would like to do interviews, whether you would like to meet these, the same two judges, whether you would like one person to judge, however you want to do, so please bring that to the next work session. So in the meantime, judges, thank you.
Thank you all for your turn.
Thank you, Judge.
Let me add, let me just a little bit on the, the report that counselwoman Jackson, most of y'all were not here in twenty-ten when that audit was done. But it was a big audit, Department of Public, Department Examiners of Public Accounts came down. I think we requested them to come in on that. But when, when they came in, and the only reason, we have tried to get them back in with City Seven, but the only reason that they came down and did the audit was because state funds rose through the magistrate's office to the tax and license department and then goes to the state of outbound, just to buy it up. So when it's dealing with state funds, then they will come in and do an audit. When they came in and did that audit, they did find some proprietary things that were done wrong. The money missing, I'm, I'm not going to say that, I can't say that they stole the money, but there were, there was money that was missing that could not be found. And it could not be traced to a department. The problem was that when it left the magistrate's office, instead of them signing a sheet and dropping it off at the tax and license department saying, hey, I'm dropping two thousand dollars off, I'm signing off on it, then I drop this off and you sign off on the tax and license that you received it. They failed to do that. The money would go in the vault and then money came missing. So, and then it comes over from the tax and license to the finance department, treasurer's office, and then it's deposited. Between them three offices, money was not accounted for. And how do you trace it when one department is saying, hey, I brought everything to the tax and license department? Tax and license said, no, this is all we got. There, there was not any documentation showing who or, or, or the person who would have handled the money. It could have easily been the money was missing in the tax, uh, tax and license department. It could have been easily mentioned that the money was missing at, at the magistrate's office. However, there were probably five or six employees fired from that. They, 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 they went out and hired attorneys, had hearings. And they, they were, it was also forwarded to the attorney general's office. Attorney general's office received the paperwork and everything. So, so it was a huge thing back then at that day when they came down. But I will say that on the previous administration, all of them matters had been corrected. Now, what happened, who got laxed and who have failed to continue doing their job, what they're supposed to do. But believe me, once the new people came in and once the Department of Examiners and everyone sitting down and talking and explaining to them, they knew what to do and there was a check and balance. I mean, deposits were being made, there were forms that they had to sign off on and everything when it came to the different departments. Now, if, if they're not doing that and the findings are still coming about, that somebody has dropped the ball somewhere. But it could be because of the turnover. There, there is, most of the magistrates that leave there is because of pay. You know, you're paying minimum wage and they, they just cannot, they just cannot work as a magistrate. Of course, it is a lot of work, it is stressful, you have to deal with the public. And when they can go and work in McDonald's and get paid more, uh, working at McDonald's and be stressed, a little bit less stressful than being in the magistrate's office because you got to have thick skin. Because when you're dealing with warrants and you're dealing with people coming in, swearing out warrants and they're mad and they want to file cross warrants and you won't allow them to file cross warrants against people, they just upset. They curse you out and, and, and get mad and kick on the door and threaten to do damage, harm to you and everything. So they have to deal with that over there. I, I've witnessed it over there. But I've also witnessed the good that Courtney, as they stated over there, Ms. Courtney Nelson, I've witnessed the good that they have done over there. Now, if you go over there and take a look or take a peek at the filing and all of the different things that she's doing in that office, you have to take what you have and make the best of it.
And she's been there how long, attorney?
Courtney has been, oh, once they, yeah.
Since March, since March, we watched her. She was not here during that audit.
Yeah, she was, she was not.
I don't believe the last one that was here doing that audit either. It was the clerk prior to that. So we, we have a lot of turnovers.
All of them were fired, the clerk was fired, the tax and license fired, if, you know. They really started off new. But, let me do one more.
Actually, Mr. Attorney, I was saying that they were not here during this twenty-seventh. This Nelson was not here.
Oh, it was on the twenty-seventh, I was going back to the twenty, yeah.
And I'm not sure if, if the young lady that left in February was here doing that audit as well. So I don't think the last two was actually here.
Might, might not have been here, that's correct.
Right, we want to make sure that going forward, that we place this Nelson and this and all of over in that department that work so hard, improve our judges, to ensure that they're not cited in our findings going forward. Because thi- this is the concern, we lose money, twenty-nine thousand in about eight months. And we also have a higher payment for our audit because of the number of findings. So we're losing money. We, we have mastered the way of losing money. You know, we, we can do that very well, we can make sure we're not in compliance and give out money very well. But I'm, what I'm trying to do is to make sure that we have some controls in place that we can fully administer.
Next item, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. I have two more items, very quickly, the item that I mentioned to you on last night. If you didn't receive a copy of it, uh,
We got our tickets too.
Do you have your tickets? I really do appreciate it. Annual Christmas concert, Selma High School choir. It was decided because Dr. Williams was here last night. But it's scheduled for Sunday, December the ninth, twenty eighteen. At what time? Four o'clock PM.
Four PM.
Four PM, annual Christmas concert, Selma High School choir on Sunday, December the ninth. That's not this Sunday, but next Sunday, okay? There'll be the second Sunday in December. Emission is five dollars. If you don't have a ticket, we have tickets, or if you want to go to the school, they have tickets. And the last item that I'm presenting is that, as I told you on last night, that tonight will be my official last council meeting coming before you.
coming before you as your city attorney. I will be available for the next two or three weeks via phone, taking a little vacation time, a little R and R. But tonight will be the last official council meeting that I will come up to, I may sit in the audience for the next one, come over and visit. But we would like to say that we are just, you know, my family and I, like I said last night, we thank you. We thank each and every one of the council members who have served on this podium here. Because if you could have voted the other way for me not to be here for eighteen years with you. I do appreciate the mayors through three administrations, Mayor Perkins who hired me in two thousand, well, recommended to the City Council to hire me in two thousand, and then for Mayor George Evans, and for Mayor Dario Melton keeping me on, because they did not have to do that, so I do appreciate it. I will not say that it have not been challenging, because it has been challenging, as Councilman Miranda stated. When I came in two thousand, yes, I was coming from, as Assistant District Attorney, as a DA from over there under my boss, Ed Green. I practiced two years prosecuting cases under Ed Green. And I did not know anything about government, didn't know who are the council, what is a resolution, what is an ordinance, didn't know. And I don't deny that I didn't know that, you know. When I first came in Jackie Smith, that's who I ran to, you know. What is an ordinance, show me, how do I prepare a resolution, you know, things of that nature. So many people have been instrumental to me. I used to be my secretary down there. Many people have been instrumental in making it to the point where I'm at now, okay? So I just wanna say thank y'all, and we wish you the best of luck. Now, I will not leave here without telling you that, again, like I said last night, we must come together as a unified group. Together we stand, divided we fall. And within this interim government, within the city of Selma, all three branches must work together, that's what they're designed for, okay? Legislative branch, executive branch, and the judicial branch of government. It's not meant for one leg to stand on its own and make all the decisions, but it's meant for all three legs to come together, all three bodies of government to come together and work together. Also, as I stated, that as being your next probate judge, if Selma goes, then Dallas County goes. So if Orville goes, Dallas County goes, if Valley Grand goes, then Dallas County goes. All of the towns, municipalities, communities sit under the umbrella of Dallas County. So we wanna make sure that we work together and partner, and strengthen our relationships with the different communities, towns, and municipalities that we have within Dallas County. And that's gonna be one of our goals over there. We have good people over there, you know, the commission, it's gonna be a good marriage between the commission and the probate judge. The existing probate judge that's there now, Judge Kim Ballard, he has been very helpful in making this transition over to that side of government. But what, and the commissioners have been helpful, so I cannot wait. My first commission meeting is scheduled on the date that I am, my first day that I go in August, January the fourteenth, and then I will have that commission meeting at night. Now, I will make mention that my swearing in is January the twelfth, that's on a Saturday, January the twelfth at three o'clock PM at Wallace Community College Gymnasium. So we're asking everyone to come, it's free, it's open to the public, to come out and witness this historical event, being the first black judge for Dallas County. But I would not be where I'm at if it was not without the help of God in my life. I was talking last night, in all my ways acknowledge God and let Him direct your path. You let Him direct your path. Sometime we go down a road, and we go down a road, and God will sit there and wait, say, that's not where I want you to go. You know, someone had mentioned about me running for the district judge position. God say, well, you're going down that road, but that's not, I'll be waiting when you come back. Yeah, I'll be waiting when you come back, and when you come back, I'll take you where I want you to go. So I believe that this is destined where I'm supposed to be at as the probate judge. I believe that God would allow it to happen if it was not within His plan. God would not take you to a situation if He cannot take you through it. So I'm just, I'm delighted, I'm ecstatic, I'm just happy that I'm gonna be able to represent Dallas County as his next probate judge, and I would not be there again without God and without the position that I'm in, the city attorney. You all have helped me so much to prepare for the position taking over Dallas County. Thank you.
We thank you.
And the citizens of Dallas County, I would not be a probate judge.
Amen to that.
Before you leave, first, two things, say the time of your swearing in one more time.
Swearing in is January the twelfth, it's on a Saturday at three o'clock PM.
Three PM, that's what I started to do last night.
Three o'clock PM, January the twelfth. Wallace Community College and the Gymnasium. I want everybody to come.
And so you know how we are, we plan things, and sometimes we don't tell you we're planning things. And so we would like Councilwoman Youngblood to invite your old boss to come up to say the word. We gotta bring up Andy Ray. We got a couple of things we wanna do in front of the stage.
I thought he was coming as a prosecutor.
Oh, you did? We heard you, we heard you say we're gonna have a prosecutor in the audience.
I just wanna tell y'all. Oh, sure, we can be stick together. I met this guy, hired him as assistant DA, watched him out there in the quarter, and he always got this big smile on his face, talking to the defense attorney. The guy was telling him why the man oughta be turned loose, and Jimmy just smiling, saying, no. We got to know each other real well, his family, and watched his kids grow up. We can range them off the house together again. But I think we got a good man on probate judge coming in, and I, by the way, have enjoyed very much him from me over there at the city court. I'm calling him up about what's going on in the city law, saving me the world. But it's a good guy, you did well, my man, glad you did. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, where's my camera icon up here, I swear, it went away. Somebody has to picture that, Edgar, 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 come back up here, I got my picture.
Watch, and he'd come up and fix his spear, how he's.
My camera icon has gone away, it's like saying, what are you doing? We gotta turn this way. All right, Michael, that's right. Put that on the channel, the pig channel, y'all pay cable for. Thank you. And.
Do well. I'll be first in the job, y'all went and stole off my prosecutor.
Yeah, I will not be in Dallas County, because it was requirement that I move in Dallas County. And I was traveling back and forth from Montgomery, few years, traveling back and forth, and to work for as a DA, you have to live within the circuit. And then Ed also went above and beyond and found me my house to live in. So he was very accommodating to lead me here in Dallas County, and I do appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
And then finally, finally, as we say our final goodbye, we all said goodbye to Attorney Nun, Councilman Johnson on last night. And I know you have some personal things you have to take care of, so if you would like to say your final goodbye, we will have a final something as a group to submit to you.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you for the call you gave me, you're an awesome father, I appreciate that. And you know, it's gonna be sad to see you go, because there's a lot that I'm gonna continually worry you about, because me, you got a lot of business, and I hope and pray that I can still call on you on some advice.
Twenty-sixty business hours, so we did get that, so just remember to do that, that'd be about.
Oh, great, good.
Twenty-sixty each.
Okay, great, that's good, I'm glad to know that, Father, but you've been an outstanding attorney. Anytime I was able to give you a call, for the day or night, whatever I asked, you always been there. And I am so grateful for you, Attorney Nun, and all the council people pretty sure the same way. I'm gonna just say thank you, thank you so much, and hope your success be just greater at the county than it was here. Again, thank you so much, and anything that I can do, please just give me a call, thank you, Father. Thank you, Senator, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and then finally, council members, again, we just appreciate you're saying that you are going to build relationships, you're going to mend relationships, and that the marriage between city and county is going to want to be a good one. We appreciate that because it's important, we appreciate the passing of the torch between Judge Ballard and you, we appreciate all of that. And because we do have a resolution and a declaration, so council members, if you would stand, we're gonna say, I found a doctor, our city attorney, he is available to us, I'm gonna stay close to the mic as you are staying, so I can read and then I'll stand when I finish. Whereas Jimmy Lee Nun is a duly licensed member of the Alabama Bar Association and the Dallas County Bar Association, and whereas Jimmy Lee Nun has been a dedicated public servant in Selma, Dallas County, and the Fourth Judicial Circuit for some twenty years, and whereas Jimmy Lee Nun has served with distinction as legal counsel to the city of Selma for eighteen of those twenty-some years, and whereas Jimmy Lee Nun has served three mayors, four city council presidents, and a host of counselors through untold number of lawsuits, and at least one redistricting, and whereas Jimmy Lee Nun was representing this city, has represented this city through times of civil and criminal unrest and untold mayhem, yet maintained proper decorum and unmeasured patience, and whereas Jimmy Lee Nun was recently elected Dallas County Alabama's first African-American probate judge, now therefore being resolved by the Selma City Council of the City of Selma, Alabama then this day, November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, be known as Jimmy Lee Nun Day in the city of Selma. There are refreshments in the back.
As soon as we're able to get copied out, we'll get.
We're gonna make it.
And now goodbye, your ringtone says, I'll be your father.
Oh, I missed it, yeah, yeah. So there's Nun life change. Proper and appropriate.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the attorney, this is it, y'all, this is it.
That's it?
The last rodeo. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And council members, Councilwoman Short has reminded me that President Bowie had spoken with Ms. Carolyn Bates and said that he would recognize her for her service in the county. He is, I apologize, Bates, he is not here tonight, but I'm also glad that Councilwoman Short reminded me of that, he would have been here if he could have. So if you would, please, we would like to recognize you for your service in the county. And then you have your retirement, all of you. You do have one. Okay, okay, so they have a flag for you, and that means come back.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And we're gonna move on to business items, we're gonna move as swiftly as possible through these items, y'all, because we went over them last night. Item number one is the current public buildings process, we went over that last night, and I also know that, and I'm gonna put these two together, Councilwoman Thompson, if you don't mind my motion and your, my item in your motion, is there anything further on the motion that you need to discuss, is everything in place for Saturday? Yes, everything is, okay. Number two, number seven, and number eight. I told you last night, I called for follow-up messages from Mr. President, he's not here, and we will talk about this again at the work session and the upcoming meeting. On last night, you all know that we had Dr. Ava, Ava Williams, Superintendent of Selma City Schools, to come concerning item number eight on the agenda, concerning the four hundred thousand dollars. And there was deep discussion on that, and there's a meeting to be held concerning that, and after that, I'm assuming there will be a motion and a vote concerning that as well, so we'll move quickly on that. That meeting, I don't know if it's gonna be in committee or full council, but what she did request was a meeting with the full council. Finals, which is all, okay, so it'll be all, it will be all, all right? I have time to make the announcement for the dates of number four, five, and six. And we will move down now to Councilwoman Short, number nine.
I thank you, Madam Secretary. If you recall, at our work session last night, I made the comeback that the sixty-eight employees that were laid off, was redheaded, so far done in now. I thought it raised that maybe we could bring back some of our displaced workers. Especially I was the minister of the city, who was our direct contact with our constituents. Y'all realize we have no way of having any contact with the people who elected and sent us to city. So Ms. Sykes is a very important part of our responsibilities as city governor. I had talked about asking this council to forego all of their discretionary funds, which at this date, which were amount to forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, and to forego their traveling training, which would amount to twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for one year. This is not indefinite, this is just for one year, separate to help some of our displaced workers. That amount was total sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five cents. And we can bring back for six months. We can bring back our council secretary, we can bring back three public works employees, we can bring back two cemetery employees and two nutrition, the course we're asked, well, I can select. I feel a first commitment would be a hard thing to do, to reach out and select who's gonna be back. So the most fair, most adequate way to do it is to reach out and search those that's under the lowest total goal of salary, such as your minimum wage workers. And with this amount of money, we can bring back for six months, seven workers and one council secretary. That is my motion in that general, because this council forego their discretionary and their traveling training with one forty-one thousand, sorry, sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-five cents.
I'll second that, Mr. Sir.
There's a motion and a second discussion? Councilman Miranda?
That is the foolish thing that I'm hearing you just say, because how you gonna, we got sixty-eight employees laid off, how you gonna pick one or two or three or four to bring back? There's a package here, the foolish man, the one got rid of, the foolish man, bring him back. The money you talking about, it ain't gonna add up, it's not adding up. And if the money you talking about, it ain't gonna add up. It's not adding up. That is, that's just not right for you to try to pick certain employees. You gonna pick the certain one that you wanna come back. I wanna see all sixty-eight. You know, see that young man right there with the green hat on? Right there? Look at y'all there, his wife. She on diabetic medicine, high blood pressure medicine. And all that don't end yet. Man, that's a crazy thing up here. That, he is hurting. I'm hurting. I'm hurting for his family. That man worked hard for to sit down over twenty-five years, and you gonna try to pick certain individuals and bring them back? Bring everybody back. It's a false, it's a false. And I'm gonna be quiet. This whole thing. This whole thing is a maybly layoff because of one's sales tax. And that's not right. That's not right. God knows, if I were on that, that, that three hundred million dollar lot, all, all sixty-eight employees, then me there. I'm telling you, I'd have gave every one a million dollars. Because we not, we not doing our employees justice by trying to pick certain ones and bring them back. It's, it's a package deal. All sixty-eight coming back. We got the money.
Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Thomas?
I have heard this Councilwoman Short spoke, but this is, this is me. I'm speaking for, as a representative, a leader of this city of Selma. There were sixty-nine, sixty-eight or sixty-nine employees laid off. And I do not be a part of, I'm against it, and I will not go for bringing, picking and bringing certain people and talking about it on a low, low scale. Because all of the people that work for the city is on a low, low scale. Uh, bring, feeding their families and their children. I will not be a part of disparage between the workers, because all of these workers got families. They got mouths to feed. They got sick relatives and everything. And I'm one of those people that, I'm for the workers. I fought for the workers. I know what the workers go through. And I'm gonna stand with these workers, because this is not fair. I would not be a part of overlooking and picking people because of what we need. We need to do our own paperwork. We need to do our own things. I learn it. I accept the fact, I accept the fact that Ms., Ms. Sykes is not here, but you know what I do? I keep my ball rolling. I keep my work rolling. I keep my work orders rolling. I, it is not fair, and I never heard of body, city, body government saying, "Pick people and bring them back on a low, low scale." No. Never heard it. And I would not be a part of that vote to do that, to take the city, general fund money that we get to take care of the city, which right now, that the city don't get service in our wards. That, that we are leaders that have not stopped, because I have not stopped. I have continued to work out there in my ward. My ward don't go like nothing, because I am skillful enough to get it done. I don't wait on nobody to do nothing for us. I get out there with that person, and we take care of our people in our ward. And we supposed to do the same thing for the city of Selma. We're supposed to stand for what is right. We're not supposed to pick over our city workers. And I do not believe in that.
All right. Councilwoman Jackson, do you mind? Uh, Councilwoman Short?
Apparently, to make myself clear, I would rather bring all sixty-eight back. But because we can't do this, it mean we don't have nobody. And as I said before, there's a process that we can't select, will be the one that is making minimum wage and those that have seniority. This is an opportunity, y'all, to put the smiles on some children's families of these displaced workers. At least seven, maybe eight families, at the very least. The only thing I'm asking of this council is to show some real leadership here and to help some of our displaced workers. I would love, Madam Chair, Councilwoman, that we bring all sixty-eight back, but be that, as it may, we can't because we don't have the money. And my colleagues continue to say, "We got money. We need to bring this money to the fourth front, so that we can all be aware of these monies." I'm going on what our auditor told us, that we don't have the money. Our general fund is the nucleus of where we pay our bills and pay our payroll. And our bills are behind, businesses not receiving our P O because we don't have the money. So, where's this national money? Once again, now, for ten, council people. I'm just asking for y'all to vote. I'm just asking that we help some families. That's all I'm asking. And it's entirely up to me and the rest of my council.
All right. We got Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Randolph, and back to Councilwoman Thomas.
I have a few questions, if I'm allowed to ask. For Councilwoman Short?
Yes.
Councilwoman Short, the sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, have you had an opportunity to speak with the chief executive officer, which is our mayor, to determine if this vote was made? Would he actually put the workers back to work?
I haven't had that conversation per se. I haven't had that conversation per se, but I did today, as a matter of fact. The next motion I'm gonna be bringing to this council, give up a year of their salaries. And the mayor has agreed that that was a good thing, and he's willing to give up fifteen hundred of his money salaries, which will equate to eighteen thousand dollars once again. Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask that there's a respect of the core discharge in the citizens of Selma. Y'all can laugh and grin all you want. This is an opportunity to help some people. These children is gonna be, that are these displaced workers, it's dependent upon their parents to bring money into their household. Yes, I would love for all sixty-eight to be here. Yes, I would love for us not to be in this financial potluck. Oh, we got it. We gotta deal with it. But here's an opportunity to help some people. And once again, it's up to y'all. Vote it up and down. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson, I want you to go ahead and just address your concerns, because what's gonna happen is we're gonna go in conversation.
Okay. So, another thing, I wanted to know if the mayor had actually stated that if this vote was made and the sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars were put into place, would it happen? Secondly, they've asserted, we gave them half of the discretionary. Does anyone know if any of the public safety items that we designated that money for have been purchased? Do they have it?
No. No, my, my, I bought my discretionary money and didn't pay for it.
And so, we have money that we've already set aside, delegated. And thank you. That was my next statement. Thank you for helping me transition. It has been asserted time and time again, as the councilman just stated, that it's on paper. So, we can move as much money as we like on paper. If we don't have it in the bank account, we can't hire anyone. And we don't know what we have in the bank account, because we're not allowed to see it. And so, you know, we can call for a vote tonight, but if we do, because we can't make those decisions, because it's done by the chief executive officer. And so, I, I, I think this is something that is really a waste of time at this point, because we can move it on paper, like everything in the bank.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Thomas?
Thank you, Ms. Krista Protem. And I wanted to say, I understand what Councilwoman Short was asking, and I certainly don't mind making a sacrifice. I've done it before, and, and some of the other council members have done it before. And I think that there are times when we do, I'll have to make a sacrifice. However, before, and, and this amounts to a gesture. And, and we may need, we may well need to be called on to make a gesture, to show our, the, the people who have lost their jobs, or to show the other city workers that we are willing to sacrifice, that we're willing to feel it too. But at this point, I believe it was Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Benjamin, who has mentioned some others. We're having to use discretionary money and other monies to do contracts, to get services conducted that aren't being done by, by what actually hasn't even been done on, on Good Day, when we had a full sale. If we aren't getting the streets cleaned, the trash picked up, then what are the chances of our, of, of businesses coming here and things getting brighter? You know, we have to have those things done. It, it is not as if discretionary monies and those sorts of things are that just, just being handed out and just being played with like Monopoly ninety. I mean, if we're, if it's a choice between just having weenie rolls and things like that, or giving it up, yeah, we can give up those. But if we're having to be, like, I'm having to look at mine and getting contracts done, assuming I can get the paperwork through and get it done. I'm having a hard time even getting that done. But, um, and I, as I said, I don't mind making a sacrifice. But before I, I make a gesture, there are some real meaningful things that have been brought to our attention, that have been brought to the council that we can do, that would make a difference and affect a meaningful change, that could put the entire course back to work. And before I will vote to do that, that would amount to a gesture, that won't put all of the force back to work, I'm gonna need to, to, to do those other things before another cent goes out of City Hall to other folks. I want other folk, I wanna take care of our own. I wanna take care of our family before we start doing other things. And I just want to say that. So, if I'm not voting to do that tonight, it's because I feel real strongly about exhausting those other resources and, and, and taking care of the whole large. Because nothing brings resentment and pain than, than feeling like you've been treated unfairly. And why would, didn't I get brought back to work? Why, why, what's wrong with my family? Why aren't my children being considered about jerky on table? So, that's why I want people to vote for that.
And Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah. I, I truly believe that as long as we got the three position that we defunded and those people still getting the pay, you know, that, that's not right. I think we need to take that pay for the people getting defunded, and then we can hire some, some people back. But as long as those people getting their legal salary, don't, don't, don't come to me talking about nothing.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Thomas?
You know, two years I sat on this panel. November the seventh, November the eighth. And for two years, I have been faithful, dedicated to working with, moving this city forward, keep working with people out in the community, even give, I give, I give out of my salary, plus even take that salary that I got and pay people. People that wants to have something, a dollar or two in their pocket, to work in my community, in my ward, to get it cleaned up. So, you know, I'm one of those people, I don't believe in disparity. I believe in together. I believe in, uh, I know how people feel about working, being laid off, because I've been that way. I'm a blue collar. I've been laid off before. That's why you working, you draw your unemployment, and you hope that things gonna get better. If you trust in God, you can believe he gonna take care of everybody out there that was laid off. You just gotta have faith and trust. This may be your first time being laid off, but for twenty-seven years, I know what it is like to be laid off. And draw my unemployment and maintain what I got till I got back on my feet. But you gotta have faith. No matter what goes on down here at City Hall and you laid off, you ain't gonna never go like you died eating and having something to drink, water, bread, or whatever. Your family gonna be taking care of. So, I want people to know, nobody sits up here and is harsh. Because this city has come to a place now where that we all have to work together. We, we practically just about got our city shut down dealing for public work. But we as leaders, we have to do the right thing. We have to keep working. We cannot hold our heads down. We cannot turn our backs. We have to keep using our skills and our mind to move forward, because that day coming, because everything in the man here. When it's in the man here, he gonna take care of. So, that's why I want people to know, nobody has a bad heart up here. Because we got to keep doing what we got to do and just have faith, because it's gonna turn around. It's gonna turn around. I just want all of y'all to know that. Because my heart, I got good heart. I give you a shirt off my back. I take you off the street into my home.
That's right.
I'm, I'm telling you what I do.
Yes, you do.
I make sure that somebody out there walking that street, they ask me for a dollar fifty cent. I don't care if I ain't got but a dollar. If I can't give it to you. So, I'm telling you, I'm telling these families, if you come to a point that you need Councilwoman Thomas to help, I go, I beg you. I give your children a good Christmas. I would beg to make sure. So, families, you got all kind of assistance out there. Go do what you have to do for your family. I just want everybody to know, because we care about you up here. Don't think we don't. We don't run a day-to-day operation. So, I just want everybody to know, this come from me. If I can help you, I'm gonna help you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council, Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Short for coming up with the idea of trying to give back a way to bring some employees back, which on here, it only gonna bring up to you. But you making an effort. You trying. We up here, as council people, got to find a way to get our workers back. I'm listening to everything everybody's saying, but I'm not hearing nobody saying, "What is it gonna take to get these employees back to work?" Lot of talk and no action. I hear me talking about defunding, safe position, but what gonna happen? You still gonna get three or four people back to work. We need to think about what it gonna take to get the whole complete workers back on our feet. We keep on, we going, we trying to digest everything in the hall on the payroll. I had employers from the finance department, finance department came to me personally, said, "Councilman, we in trouble. We ain't got no money." And I'm like, "What?" He said, "We are broke." She said, "Brother." And I'm like, and I'm going back looking at the finance report and looking at this, and again, two people, the new councilman who came on here and saw, "Well, we was in trouble." The Jackson one, and Councilwoman Short one. We are in trouble. We keep hearing that we got money, but nobody sitting up and producing it. I don't want to believe in the bottom of my heart that this mayor wanna lay off sixty-eight people because he wanna be low down and dirty. I don't believe that. I don't believe that. And then another thing. I'm having them that's calling me all the time about wants to get paid. I'm not gonna call them. They know who they is. These folks got to be paid just like the city workers need their jobs. Apparently, we need some money, some kind of way. Back here a year ago, I brought up saying that, "Let's get some revenues in here for some sales taxes." And it passed. I said, "We'll, we'll do that, and then we'll take it to the public." But again, the mayor said, "What? Let's try to clean up, make some adjustments, what we can do within the house before we do that." And I said, "Well, may I have no problem with that. I resent my motion." And I did do that. So, apparently, we did some adjustment. We did some cleaning up, did whatever it takes for him to, to get his mind straight. So, now, after he done done that, and I think we still, as I'm doing the budget, we made some more cuts. How much cut we got to make? We gotta get some more funding, man. We gotta do something. And meanwhile, I'm saying this. Come up with something. Come up with a solution. Come up with some more funding we gotta come up with. Don't keep these people in hopes alive thinking they gonna get hired next week. We, we, that's what we said. The newspaper said, "Four hundred thousand dollars will hire people back." That's a false movement. In nineteen eighty-two, there was a one cent sale tax was passed. That was after, if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Swift. That was after, if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Swift saying that twenty percent of that gonna go toward education. Okay, what we do, that money already earmarked, that money is earmarked in that one cent that we give today. So okay, what we do, we gotta come up with some revenues. That four hundred thousand dollars, and I don't see how we can take that back from education. I don't see how we can do it, when it's already earmarked, but that that's in the minutes, if I'm not mistaken. Again, is it, it's in it, so I don't know, how can we take that? If we, if Councilman Swift said that it's in, that only way we do this half, uh this one cent, back during Joe T. Smith's time, that twenty percent of that we're gonna go toward education. So that means to me, where I'm giving, that's gonna be stuck right there toward education. So that four hundred thousand, I can't see us taking that away from education. If it is, shame on us, because then we taking away from our children. So we need to go other ways and try to find revenues. I'ma come back again and make a motion for one cent sales tax for one year until we go ahead and get the Ablan tax passed, and then we take it back off the table, we got to do something. So I'm saying, I'm trying to find a way to get our workers back to working, along as pay our donors, because I know if I paint your van five thousand dollars, I want to be paid too. These donors want to be paid. We have to pay our our oil, gas, they get gas now and sell them everywhere, we owe these folks. Eighty thousand dollars, I had a chef came to my office saying they need seventy-five thousand dollars because they're gonna kill the nine-one-one. Stop nine-one-one, we need that money. And I'm not telling you just some, just talking, when I, when that Michael Johnson to this this mic, I'm talking facts. I'm not just talking as we talking. This man came to my office saying, "We need seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars, not gonna cut nine-one-one off." This ain't what I heard, this is what I know for a fact. Now, I'm not sure whether we paid these folks yet or not, but we have to meet our debt, because the county and the city have to work together to make the nine-one-one payment. Now also, the other people with the oil company, I'm not sure whether we made that yet or not, but again, we need to pay our donors. And I thank you, Councilman Shaw, you came up with an option, some kind of way to get some of our employees together. And and that's all I'm saying, and I I'm with, if anybody come up and saying, "Let's go down here downtown, sweep the floor to get some work," I'm with it, whatever it takes to get our workers back to work, at least you make a o- 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 option. So we need, as councilpeople, need to come up with some kind of reason to help get this city back moving.
Uh before I go to Councilwoman Thomas and then Councilman Shaw. Councilman Johnson, um, I I think you were here when I gave several options that came out of the meeting with the mayor. I think you were here when I gave those options, so let's not forget that we did discuss that. And um and yet we had invoices to get through and get paid for so many settings, when uh certain people said there was a crisis coming, we had invoices being, certain invoices being paid in the midst of it. Councilwoman Thomas and Councilman Shaw.
Uh, I'm sorry. Councilman, uh, Councilman Johnson, I hear you talking, you're talking about the one cent, the sale tax. Do you understand, a lot of people, a lot of people likes to know where their money gonna go? For the last two years, uh, people, this panel had not been monitoring city funds. We have not uh say uh, say where, for the two years that we have been sitting here, no one really just say uh, if you notice the P O's, that that purchase orders of of over two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Okay, over two hundred and eighty-eight thousand of purchase order, things that been done. This council, half of us don't even know what it has been done on. And then, you know, it's easy for you to ask this this citizen of Salem to raise a one cent. It's easy for us to come out of our mouth, but you gotta look at the people with the business and the people that are paying taxes, and the people wanna say, "Okay, here we are now." We can't give and count nothing, because we don't get no, no paperwork, no nothing. Neither one of us can say what's here and what's there, because you saying work together. But right now, we are bodies sitting here talking about what we need, but we're not getting a response from the finance office, we're not getting a response from the mayor. And the mayor, he he's the one that runs this day-to-day operation, not this council, because the things that have been done to this, to this city, is because of the people that are in place that are running this city and keeping these things going. Money's been spent, money's been owed, that we don't even know when this was done. You got work been done for like uh, who pays uh five thousand dollars? This is Jennifer money coming out to paint your office, who pays uh? I'm just being honest, you, we talking real talk. No, we got on paper.
Councilwoman Thomas, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson, she has the floor.
Mr. Johnson, this is what, if you got your thirteen hundred pages or whatever pages that the mayor, okay, he sent it. And if you take time and you go through them, and you look, and you get up and you walk around to every city building, and you look, we have events at the convention center that people pay. Where's that money, where that money go to? And for the last two years, I've been monitoring this thing, you got all these events going on, you got from the Evans Building, from here, everything being rented out, where did you use that money to? But then you look at it and say, "I did thirteen thousand on repair." I'm looking at the Evans Building, I'm looking at the convention building, I'm looking around, I'm looking at the carpet, I'm looking at. If you look at all those P O's, you'll say, "Well, hm, all this work been done." All this work been done, but we gonna ask the citizen of the city of Salem to raise the tax, but we got to prove to the citizen of Salem that that money gonna be done right, spent right. Don't you wanna ruin them up out this city?
Can I respond to that? Can I respond to that?
Uh, we um, we have called for the vote, um, Councilwoman Jackson had her hand up. I I I blew it loud that it's Councilwoman Jackson does not mind, and we gonna call for the vote.
If he responds, then I speak and then the vote, that's fine.
Okay, well, again, remind yourself, Ms. Thomas, you did vote for the tax last time you asked that. There were three votes, me, you, and Councilman Shaw uh for the taxes, so I guess you had a change of heart lately on that, because uh again, we need revenues in here. I took a liberty to talk to our condition free circulation gentleman, and just so happened I hit the right one on the head about these invoices. This business said they wouldn't mind coming here for us and present every document and everything they done, not just the City Hall, but every city building in the city of Salem to present the work that they done for the for the money they got paid for. And I said, "Well, you know what? Um, that may not be a bad idea, but I would just, I just leave that alone until it come up to that point." Because this this company told me that they can verify every dime that the city gave them for what they did, because they didn't do work just for one building. So again, we sitting here, we talking about these different things, working, you just ain't get this work for free. You know, and uh, and and we got to also keep in mind, the cost of living is so much more than what it used to be. I mean, so much used to be, like I said again, when I first got a bid, it was twelve thousand dollars, but now it's fifty thousand dollars. So we still operating on the same budget that was done back in Joe T. Smith's days. And I don't think it is increasing, it increased much, but the cost of living is steadily increasing, going up more and more. So basically, what I'm saying is, we sitting up there running out chops, but we need to try to find a way to get that young man back to work. We can sit here and talk all night long, but we got a way to get these employees back to work.
Okay, I want you to respond, Councilman Johnson.
That's what I'm saying, and that's basically it, but we 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 coming up with all these numbers and doing all these figures in this book here, and uh and trying to digest every dime. But in the meanwhile, these these workers ain't getting no job, but we not trying to buy it back with that.
Okay, so at the at the second, not repeating everything, and right, you said, "Councilwoman Jackson, go ahead," and I'm calling the vote.
Okay, um, Councilman Johnson, I guess I'm in the difficult position, because I believe that there, that we're in strenuous times. I believe that um if we're not in a crisis, we're close to a crisis. I believe that we need to tighten the belt. I hear we need to get workers back to work, I hear we need new revenues, but I haven't heard how we can curb what we're doing. And to the councilwoman, it may have been five thousand dollars total for his office, but it was two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to pay him. Um, I've voted those invoices.
Wow.
And I hope that you spoke to the company that has erroneously worked for the city and that has um been the reason that the city has been cited, um and received a warning from the State of Alabama General Contractors Board, that wasn't, so the company that you're you're alluding to may not be the company that, I'm looking at the documentation, you received it. Uh, you received the documentation, because he he sent it to everyone.
I had got it, yeah, I was.
Well, I make sure I forward it to you tonight.
I had got it.
Okay, I make sure I forward it to you tonight, because I want you to be able to look at this documentation, because we do have refrigeration companies that um have license and that appears to be in proportion to what um you should do, I believe a labor is worthy of their hire. But I believe that when you have someone that claim to fix a leak, and this is what the description says, and I'm not wanting to finger anyone, because it could be that we don't uh put in great descriptions, but to fix a leak for five thousand dollars, that's inappropriate, that's that's too much for me. I mean, what type of leak are we fixing for five thousand dollars? And if I saw that as in in the financial office, I would wanna make sure that I pick the best description in the world, so we wouldn't have a problem like this. I didn't ask for, when I initially asked for the documentation, I asked for the last six months that the mayor himself came in and asserted that was backlog, that's what I asked for. What I got was the last two years, and so I took to taking the time, the diligence, and the wherewithal to go through these documentations, and I have done that. I don't have to lie, I haven't said that the mayor or anyone else has done anything erroneous other than what the State of Alabama General Contractors Board has stated and and sent us a warning. But I have stated that these raised my eyebrows. Now, it could be that I don't understand, that I don't know what someone would um do to make repairs, since building repairs, five thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars, since building a bike rack for nineteen thousand dollars. I don't know if we have a bike rack since, we have um, we have store vehicles for nearly fourteen thousand dollars. These are all in those documentation that we have here. I don't, listen, my point is to find out where we have spent over, to see how we can curb that and not repeat that, then look for new revenues. Now, if you all wanna look for new revenues while I try to curb the spending, let's let's work together and do that, but to assert that we're not being leaders because we're not finding new revenues, I'm not going to vote for new money that you can spend, and because we're gonna need more money in two years from now, because all we do is spend, now that is what is said, that's what the officer said, no one has repeated, that the officer stated that our expenditures outweighed our revenue. Our expenditures outweighed our expenditure.
Now, that's real talk.
President Pro Tim Benjamin?
No.
Councilman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
No.
Councilwoman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Randolph?
No.
Councilman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, well, it takes them to get the workers to help, if it's just one yes.
Call the vote, let it pass.
Three yes and five no.
Three yes, five no, okay. All right, Councilman.
Okay, my next.
We're on a different topic again.
I'm asking the council, uh, I don't wanna say that, let me just say this, every summer, the city have a summer in program, and they assemble at the convention center, and they send away from four to five hundred children, they're anticipating and praying and hoping that they all award their job. Say, but it is true, the city don't have the funds to afford all five hundred, and we wish we did. However, we we did not turn those five hundred children away, because we can't afford all five hundred. The city chose a city, whereas at least twenty to thirty children can participate in a meaningful work experience a summer, and it's going to be a lot. I I pointed that out simply because I hear people saying we need to bring all six to eight, yes, we do, but at this juncture, we can't. Now, I'm asking the council, because of the ill-tired seasons, that will put some smiles on some children's faces, whose family, whose father and mother has been displaced because of lack of funds by this city, and that amount uh that I'm asking is to forego your salaries for a year. Now, all of us profess to be public servants, not politicians, so. And if you up here supplementing your household income because of this salary, then you in the wrong place. What I'm simply saying is that this would generate a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents, which will allow an additional fifteen to twenty minimum wage for six months. Effective no T. Sumner first, it will be back on the job, it will be earning monies, and their children will have a smile on their face on Christmas Day. Now, the reason I'm asking for a vote on this, because no majority vote can demand that you give up your salaries. This would have to be something that you as a councilperson would readily agree to do. Once again, uh, I'm only trying to help some families and waited that coming. And this council choose not to, it's strictly up to you. I'm not trying to put nobody on the spot, I'm just speaking as a matter of fact, there are sixty-eight displaced workers that is looking and asking for our help. And yes, we can't bring all sixty-eight because we don't have the money. And if we do, somebody can't get me no way then. And if there is truly real monies, then I would demand this money become fun and simple, so that we can bring all sixty-eight workers back, so we don't have to worry. So once again, I'm gonna make a motion that this council, you public servants, not politicians, give up your annual salary for one year, so that we can help some displaced workers return to work, these something.
I'll second that, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Attorney Taylor, writing with the vote, they're voting on, no, you, you're obdullying, you're obdullying, you okay, uh, okay, yeah.
Uh, I I I think what Councilman Shaw is stating that if everyone wants to voluntarily give up.
Yeah. A five or four woman's gonna take your salary? I mean, they're clear, this is something that's gonna be dependent on you and your willingness to do it. Now, discretionary, it took mine, we can't get, but I'm asking, he is, that especially being a public servant, you know, so make this sacrifice one year to give us six thousand.
And that's why I called you, because you know, we have a new council meetings, but I think they did their own research, uh, and they know that uh this is voluntary, and anybody who wants to give up their salary can simply do a resolution or go see the finance department. But I, that's why I called you.
And 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 state law, once, you know, you can only change your salary six months prior to the election. Once you elected, your salary, yeah, your salary remains the same during that term. However, as councilperson stated, you can voluntarily give up your salary, as we have, we have two councilmembers who voluntarily uh switches it over, give it up, and does different things with it. You can do that uh if you like, and it can be on an individual basis, or it can be as a council uh as a whole, they have to volunteer to give it themselves.
Councilman Randolph?
So I was wondering why we all saw that, that don't even license. But anyway, but um, I don't, I'd like to make a motion that we table that until the mayor releases some documents saying we broke. So, you know, because I'm. So I want to make that.
As a motion to table.
Yeah.
Is there a second? I I'll give a second, I thought people were gonna jump on that, out of all this discussion, second. All right, discussion, Councilwoman Thomas, is your hand?
I'd like to say this, this is part of giving back. Every year I uh I give, so this year I will give to the the families that have kids. I do every year I give. So this year, I'm gonna turn this around and still be giving it to the ward seven. I will be giving this to the families that have children laid off this year for Christmas. I will be doing my drive towards you, to your families, for your children.
All right, Councilwoman Jackson, do you have your hand?
Please, ma'am, I did. How long would, and how many workers would be replaced for the hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred forty-three dollars?
How long would, and how many workers would be replaced for the hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred forty-three dollars? And you said fifty-seven cents?
For, for six months, six, uh, twenty, twenty workers.
Twenty workers for six months. Was it fifty-seven cents?
Uh, seventy, seventy-three cents.
Seventy-three cents. Um, Councilman, do you recall my statement on last evening with the hundred and twenty-three thousand for the two positions? As I stated, two were off, I wasn't aware of the third position, I don't have very much knowledge of it. And so I looked at the two defunded positions and that amounts to a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, and it uh would, at our salaries, uh, it would take care of eight of them. Eight of our salaries if he would just do what um is lawful and what has been authorized by this council and not continue to pay the funded positions, just do them. Um, the third one may actually exceed your amount or cover it if that is what the council deemed necessary. And so I think it's a little disingenuous. I'm, I'm, I'm having difficulties because, first of all, I, I don't feel like it's public service or a public service. I think it is political, um, because I, I, I know, like I said, whatever we do is secret, God will reward us openly. I know that we have two councilmembers that give up their salary, and they've never broadcast it, they've never um brought it to the floor, that others do what they've done. And so I think it's very personal, and I think that that's a closet decision to be made. Um, I think it's an inward decision to be made, and if you're passionate and compassionate about that, and you feel that you want to give up your salary for the mayor to maybe pay an invoice or continue to pay someone to stay downstairs and, and watch the building, um, when we don't have money. Um, you know, please do that, but don't get in a council meeting and say that we lack leadership and we're political because we don't say, share the same sentiments. I just believe that's a little disingenuous. We, we have money going out the door to the tune of a hundred and twenty-three thousand um for positions that we've already.
Uh, yes, uh.
People speaking out of the saddle and they talking about we care about their employees, but here's an opportunity to really help somebody. That's, that's disingenuous. Let me tell you what's disingenuous. Put your, put your, put your, put your money where your mouth at. Let's do some thing for some people, y'all. I'm not up here to fight y'all. I'm, I'm up here to work with y'all. Here's an opportunity to help some people, that's all I'm asking. Vote or not, down. Madam Chair, call for the vote to table. I'm gonna vote no, so let's, let's see.
There is a vote to table, and it has been seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Pro Tem Benjamin?
To table, yes.
Councilwoman Bowley?
I'll pass.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
No, I actually believe the matter should be resolved this evening.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
No.
Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Councilwoman Johnson?
No.
We have four.
Recall.
We have four no, three yes, and one pass.
Call for the vote.
Okay, I wanna call for the vote for the original motion.
Councilwoman Pro Tem Benjamin?
And repeat the ori- original motion, sorry, one no, one down.
Original motion is that the council told them to give up their one year salary for one year where they can help twenty displaced workers return to work like this summer.
Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Pro Tem Benjamin?
No.
Councilwoman Bowley?
No.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
No.
Councilwoman Jackson?
No.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
No.
Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Oh, I almost lost my footing on where we are. Thank you all so much, and we're gonna move now down to uh, let me find out where we are. Uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Randolph, uh, that I have taken off consent and a councilmember, I spoke to me and I spoke to you on what the councilmember said, is to go down to uh seek the finance department. Seek the finance department for that. So I, I wanted to let you know that it was full, full of dollars.
I don't mind if they pull up, but the finance department already had. So.
I know, I said I would, I told him I would rescind it. I would send it again.
So, I'm vote, I'm not gonna make her, remit her a check. I think there's a better decent way to get what she needs, Councilwoman Randolph. That's all I'm suggesting. Well, she, she, there needs a way, she turned it in first time. A vote from this council, not to make her give the check. She turned it in the right, first time. So why she, she had to go again? I'll tell you what, Councilwoman, put it on the floor. No, I've been saying, I've been saying she did it right the first time. Put it on the floor, let's discuss.
So, so what I was doing wasn't for you because you were not here at your, I was taking off his head. So I was giving you a net wire, all right?
What, what, what I'm saying, that, that, that's not, you know, that's not right to, to, to try to table something. And she already turned the documentation in for the first time. You know? So what's wrong with Councilwoman Benjamin going down? Councilwoman, can you go down and, uh, generally, the mayor did with his six hundred dollars, you go down and demand your money just like he did.
You mean to stand there like they did after the ones.
Yeah, and tell you ain't going no way until it get cut.
Stand right there.
Stand right there.
Like they.
And you ain't been to stand there, can I come with you?
I will, I will go tomorrow.
I will hope you will do it.
That, that was sarcasm. That was sarcasm, Councilwoman LaShaw. I will go tomorrow. Yes, I will. All right, next up, we have allegations. Councilwoman Randolph?
Yeah, I, I, um, I'm gonna talk real briefly about it. Um, I talked, I put this on here because I'm sick and tired of the mayor and the police chief. When they trying to get folks, they bring up these false allegations on people. And uh, and we needed to call for investigation with the, with the attorney general against the mayor and the police chief because the first time they said this Wade, this Wade uh was under investigation, and that turned out to be a lie. But nobody, we, we still let that kind of stuff go on. And then uh, he, he cruised, Officer Fitz was doing something, and he said Officer Fitz was under investigation, slurring out that man's name, and that was a lie. You know, and then he get mad at the three police officers because he bought uh six all basketball tickets with, with, with city funds. But they don't want, get indicted because he think they ratted on him, but that's unfair, you know, and, and, and. So what are we gonna do about uh these football tickets? Anybody want the uh basketball ticket? Anybody care that was paid with city money? Any, anybody want to research? Or we just gonna let that slide?
Okay, so you and uh, you and Councilwoman Thomas, the base, um.
I heard it to Cheekens. I heard about Cheekens.
Uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, and Councilwoman. Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Thomas. Okay, there's, there's yours, there's yours.
I think, I think we're doing the investigation on that ourselves.
Okay, so let me tell you what you, what you can do, and I'm ready with the, the attorney. So you don't have to keep talking about it, we can, um, Councilwoman, when you type it up for one, and everybody who wants to sign it, to send the information on to the assets commission can, can do that. If you would type that up, you've been serving as our administrative assistant lately, I'll come down at some point and help you. Uh, you can type that up, whatever you want to do. Everybody wants to put their signature on it, get with their signature on it.
Yeah, because it's a bruise of power. And it's not, that's not.
I wanted to make sure you were fair. All right, Councilwoman Bowley?
The AG's office is not gonna announce an investigation. I mean, they, they won't do that. I mean, that, you know, Collier being in the newspaper talking about Wade, that was Collier, the newspaper talking about Wade. The AG's office is gonna come and get you. So if the AG's office coming for you, they got good reason to be there. If they're asking you questions, they already know the answers to. So, you know, we don't know who's under investigation. I mean, I could be under investigation for all I know. I mean, AG's office ain't gonna let me know until they come and get me. So, again, I don't know how we could tell who's under investigation, who's not under investigation. But I'm just saying, just to make the point clear, the AG's office is not gonna announce an investigation, so.
I, I don't want the AG to announce, I want to bring you on investigation.
Well, how do you know they're not already investigating?
From Chief and Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't know.
How you know they don't already have all those paperwork we just got?
But, I hope they do.
All right, so um, if you would request that, those who would like to sign it, can sign it, and those, those who do not uh want to sign it, you do not have to sign it. Is that all, Councilwoman Randolph?
We have a question.
All right, um, Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, I think before we sign anything and look at anything.
You don't have to.
Right, and I realize that, um, what I was actually stating is that before we look, do that, we've been sent two years' worth of documentation, um, invoices, um, general ledger funds. And so if it's been paid, we'll find it there, uh, if it's been paid from city funds. Um, and I will tell you that on page seventeen, I did find something quite interesting. Um, but it wasn't Alabama Auburn basketball tickets.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
So actually, Alabama Auburn football.
Football.
On the seventeenth, um, and so, so I'm, I'm thinking, look at the documentations you've been sending. And that's why when you say it's estimate and it's a waste of time, and we're looking at things that we shouldn't, and we should be focusing on this. You know, everybody focus shouldn't be the same. We should be working together.
Right.
Every spoke, spoke, excuse me?
You said you spoke, didn't you?
Yes.
Um, let me, let me, let me make sure, you know.
I'll tell you how to sell it.
We got it. You sold it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
It does allude to that, yes, sir.
Yeah, so um, it has the date and it was, but let me tell you this, it was paid by, what, whatever, do you see the credit card?
Yes.
Okay, and so I don't know, and um, who may have purchased those tickets because they purchased with credit card, with the credit card. But I'm based on the date, Chief Collier was not employed with the city, so.
All right, so that leads into someone else. All right, anything else? Councilwoman Miranda, did you have your hand up? Okay, all right, so we're moving on to the next item. Yes, we're almost done. Bits for public buildings. Councilwoman, you did not speak on that last night. Would you like to speak on today?
I need to find, um, to, to know if that, um, the situation with the public building that I'm trying to, or I wanted to put a motion to the floor. You know, for the event for Saturday. It passed.
It passed. What, is that what that was about?
Yes.
Okay.
It passed under the consent agenda. So we will, so how will we, uh, we follow, follow that? How will we, uh, you know, we discuss that, you know, are we gonna volunteer our time? Because we offer our time to win this event Saturday to help.
Yeah, the volunteers volunteered on last night, so you all just need to get, with uh Terry Davis and get the keys. Um, there's gonna be set up done, uh, Councilwoman Randolph is gonna get some gentlemen to set up, and um, there, um, you and Councilwoman Randolph will co- cover the event.
But we need to get that sent uh to the mayor because, you know, we don't, we need to, we need to have this in place before Saturday. We, that information needs to go, we need to send that soon as possible to the mayor.
Well, it was done last night, so I'll check the president and see if he sent it this morning. I'll check with him.
Okay, please do.
Okay, I will. Councilwoman LaShaw?
Have we thought about the liability, the comfort that service that we're trying to extend? Have we thought about the liability, the comfort, the service that we're trying to extend and maintain public buildings? Have we thought about the liability?
The liability to the council member or to?
To, 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 uh, the people that, Councilwoman Randolph, oh, we need to help.
Oh, the help, uh, Councilman, uh, the liability, will they relinquish the city of, um, our liability setup? The, the gentleman that you're gonna have set up?
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna do it myself.
Me and him.
Okay.
But is that way my liability? Let me, uh, let me, let me, uh.
Okay, let's let him finish, Councilwoman Johnson.
I'm, I'm gonna help him.
I'll, I'll, you wanna help, you wanna volunteer?
No, I'm willing to pay some guys that, that were used to working in there, bring them back, whatever the hourly wage it is. I will pay them for the service, the Councilwoman Randolph got a foot problem.
He does.
And I, I don't want to, I will pay the two guys or whatever guys that would do that. I will pay them.
Does that council get concerned about our businesses and stuff like that, Councilwoman LaShaw?
There is evidence that uh, people uh wants to volunteer, but we gotta be real about the dividend. The dividend says, and somebody, somebody gets, somebody gets real, and we don't, and he's not.
Okay, so. We have a waiver that's, that was created already. I don't know if it's in Attorney General's office or ours. Is it in yours, Attorney General?
It's in my office, but uh, I do know that, I think so, personnel has a copy of the waiver.
Okay.
Or, you know, walking, wanting to volunteer, and it's been forwarded to Keisha.
Okay.
They requested the uh waiver a couple of days ago.
Okay.
And I think the mayor's office may have a copy of it also.
Okay, so we'll get a copy of the waiver, uh, Councilman, uh, Thompson and Councilwoman Randolph, make sure that they sign up.
You go first, we're welcome.
Okay, Councilwoman Thomas?
So, that's what I'm saying, like, uh, the hours, like, if Miss Terry Davis doesn't, uh, or one of, or Miss Edwards don't, uh, unavailable. If we have to assist these people that build these buildings for the hours, to stay there, I, I'm devoted, I would devote my time there because it's helping the city, they want this business. And if she can't, uh, neither one of them, I, we, I would stay there for the.
Okay, I think several councilmembers volunteered on last night. All right. Uh, citizen review board, okay, that's President Boos' item, he, he's not here. Councilwoman, you've taken care of number fifteen, correct? Okay, and number sixteen, you took care of already. Seventeen?
Uh, Mr. Thompson is not here, but my concern is with the operational grants. I want to know, um, what grants we receive, what money is allocated. Um, and we need to know, um, if, especially if we're applying for matching grants, what, um, they're applying, applying for. Um, currently, I was told on last week when I was calling about some invoices, that, um, it was grant money. Um, and that we bid without any planning and development, and so that's why we need to know, uh, all of the operational grants. Which leaves me, and we can't get them, so I guess I should have put that, I'd be allowed to have a conversation with him, or um, can we ever a, a vote to ask that we get a, a spreadsheet or some type of information, get it written down? All the current operational grants, um, their total amount, the matching amount for the, um, that would cost the city.
We have a motion. Council members, do you have a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can you restate that motion?
Re- restate your motion, please.
My current motion is that we get a copy of all current operational grants, the total amount of the award and any cost to the city.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, no call.
President Pro Tem Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Number eighteen, Councilwoman?
And, um, as I alluded to earlier, and we talked very in details about on last evening, um, our requirements. I think, um, maybe this should be something that we put into the administrative committee because, um, we have been, um, warned, received a warning from the State of Alabama General Board of Contractors regarding, um, the way that we are allowing, um, unlicensed contractors to do, um, over fifty thousand dollars worth of work inside the city itself. And I, I have stated that it was to the tune of two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and some odd dollars, I don't have it pulled up, um, currently. But I think that this needs to go into committee. We need to act, determine what are the procedures, where was the breakdown? Um, and it's twofold, because not only are we looking at we awarded or allowed or gave these contracts, but we're also looking at the fact that they should have had permits and, um, that would have been a violation as well. And so we need to put this in committee, make sure that we have, um, plans in place, procedures in place, policies in place. Make sure this, because the next time is not gonna be a warning, the next time is going to be a fine. And it could, um, be, I think it was a B and C, um, class B and C, Mr. Mina Feller. Um, and I'm thinking this for yesterday.
Okay. Well, you finished, Councilwoman Jackson?
Well, each of you finished. That is correct. I'm sorry.
And they, they didn't put a cease and desist letter, right?
Well, um, yes, I asked, I asked the question, because I have seen the, um, typically at the board stated that it was mailed on November fifteenth or the sixteenth. And, um, I asked her specifically, would they need to cease? And I asked her specifically, would they need to cease any work they are doing currently? And she said, yes. So we, we have to ensure that that doesn't happen because if they're investigated, come out again, now we're fined. And this, this puts the city in a precarious situation, and that's why I want to know, what are the process? What is the process? Because I thought that anything that was bided out had to be approved by the council. Am I wrong on that?
You are not wrong.
Over fifty thousand dollars?
Over fifty thousand.
Fifty or over?
You are not wrong.
No, I don't think so, because I'm, I'm doing a project down there from the special. And it ain't been approved.
Attorney's, come on.
I'm not sure, I think I had something for the council.
Fifty thousand dollars or more?
We have two types of bid law. We have competitive bid law and you have the public buildings bid law. Competitive bid law is fifteen thousand, your public buildings is anything over fifty thousand. When you're talking about bid, if it's over fifty thousand on city property, you can bid it out. It has to, most family will be handled through the city clerk's office. City clerk's office will bring it to the city council, just like the police vehicles. If you recall, when there's a sewage project, if there's an emergency, when Ray Hart come before the city council, things of that nature, when you purchase vehicles, them are bids that have been let and it comes before the city council for approval. Now, yours, I think we discussed, yeah, we discussed, but we also, when we talked Ray Hart, we still said that it didn't need to be bid.
Be bid, right, but it...
Even when it bid, then it kind of goes to the, she'll bring it to the city council.
Okay, because it coming to my oilies.
Yeah.
Okay, because I don't necessarily have to get approval on that shit.
You don't have to get approval to spend it, but you still have to get approval on the bid.
Right, I know that part, that's what I'm saying.
You know, you know.
That's my point, that's what I'm saying.
Well, and see, I want to make sure that we're clear on this because I was told it's grant money and so it doesn't have to come before the council. No, that's not, actually, I have a grant. Because the fact of the matter is, if it's out of bid and if over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars was spent to demolish the building, then I think we should be made aware of it. Now, I'm not sure...
The bid law is the best.
The bid law is the best. I'm not sure if this is, is the item that they were citing on, but they were cited for conducting business with the city of Selma over fifty thousand dollars and not having a State of Alabama General Contractors license. And so we need to make sure that when there are bids coming up, that when we're spending, and it's not just a one time, that's why we need to know about what's being spent. That's why it's important to go through these documents, because it's a cumulative amount. So they say you can have a person, the way Tiffany explained it to me and the way I understood it, is that you can have a go-to person that you call on each day when this breaks, this come, you need them to come in to fix this area. But if in that year, it's fifty thousand dollars or over, they must have a State of Alabama General Contractors license. If we're giving them the opportunity to spend five thousand dollars at their leisure and no one is saying, okay, well, you've had ten items at five thousand dollars within this year, so I need a copy of your license. And she stated to me, it is the city of Selma's responsibility to ensure they have the builders' contractors license.
Of course.
Contractors license. It's our responsibility to ensure that that happens now. And I have spoken with Miss Ivey and she's there because they say it should go through her office. And we know that sometimes there have been bids coming for us that have not gone through her in the office or have not originated with her. And so I don't know where the breakdown is, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but I'm saying if we don't get this corrected, each offense, each offense, and if we're looking at each offense, let me pull that up.
Why you pull that up, Councilwoman? Are you advocating for a change in policy and process?
I am.
So let's put that motion on the floor and take care of it.
Let me get a second. Let me see if we're leaving that, and I'm not sure how much it doesn't state in the law. And let me give you the law that she gave it to me. So you can go later.
Let me ask a question.
Councilwoman?
Could the person be working on somebody else's license? That are doing the actual work? Now, that's, that's...
Well...
Did they give them a response time for the citation?
As I just, as I stated to you, this person was cited as for not having a general contractors license. Then, excuse me, I shouldn't say cited, I should say warned. The city of Selma was warned, this contractor doing business as, as stated in our vendor is not licensed with the State of Alabama based on the information provided by Tiffany on yesterday and based on their board review on the eleven fourteen when they decided that they would sign it. So I don't know all the dealings and who works with them out under and all those things. All I know, I'm not trying to figure that out. All I know is that when they come and say they want to work for the city of Selma, I don't care if they're spending three hundred dollars, we need to ask for a license. Not unless you have a license with the city of Selma. But that, that law is thirty-four dash eight dash eight.
Say it one more time.
That thirty-four dash eight dash eight and thirty-four dash eight dash nine, that's the bid law, as well as the permit law.
All right, ma'am, place your motion on the floor.
My motion is that we develop policies and procedures to ensure that the city of Selma is not putting themselves in a liable position when we're contracting with individuals, period. So I don't, I don't want to say over fifty thousand because it's a cumulative amount.
So, okay, for clarity's sake, and this may help you out, so do you want, then you're saying you want the motion to be for us to develop a policy to do that? But you don't want the motion to say tonight that those who are bidding needs to come before the council?
That, that's the procedure already?
Uh-huh.
That their, any bids are supposed to come before the council, that's the law, that's the procedure?
Well, process starts there. Process starts there. And so I thought you were advocating a change in policy where the process starts here. So, but you're not, you're just saying, you just want to make a motion that we develop it?
Develop the policy, the procedures, everyone knows it, and so there's not a fall, that no one follows any cracks.
All right.
And I just think that we should, the policy should include that we get license on anyone that does work, I don't care if it's two hundred dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, because we don't know how many times we may use them throughout the year and it may also accumulate.
Okay, so we can develop that in work session, that's what the motion is to develop the policy is that... Hey, hold on, hold, hold on. The motion is to develop a change in policy and is there a second to this motion? Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
All right, further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Okay, I'm not sure if Miss Ivey Harris can help with this, but don't we have this already, ladies?
We have developed procedures for contractors. That went into effect last year with...
The motion is to develop a procedure, a change in the process.
Okay, change in the process. But I have a question. You said that, speaking in terms of license, are we talking about general license or state license? I need to make that a part of it.
State license.
And then make it...
So you're not saying that they don't have a general contracting license when you want them to have a state license initially?
Okay, so I think we're, I'm not talking about, and that's part of our policy, that we develop to ensure that they have a license with the city of Selma. The State of Alabama says if they accumulate or they bid fifty thousand dollars of work, then they're required by law to have a state Alabama general contractor. So, and then we need to make sure, so someone needs to, go ahead, I'm not even gonna bring that up. I'll bring it up in a sec.
Madam Court, what, what else?
I just want to make sure that I'm putting this in the record that she's warning this at the table.
Okay, state of Alabama.
Fifty thousand dollar and above threshold or just in general, State of Alabama?
State of Alabama.
Usually in general, State of Alabama.
Okay, that's what I want. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Court, no call.
President Pro Tim Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Bolin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood? Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shaw?
I'm gonna stay, there's already a policy and process engaged.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm gonna ask this thing, so I need a bit more information on this.
All right. We're gonna move now to committee reports and, and of course, it's not outlined on here, so I'm gonna go to you all by name, but I do want to start in one place in particular because it was brought to me. I want to start with capital equipment. Who's the chairperson of the equipment? It was brought to my attention that the equipment purchased by Councilman Bolin has not been able to be used because it has not been, I guess Councilman Bolin, you elaborated on this before Councilman Randolph's speech. I guess you submitted the money for, but the equipment was not purchased to be used?
Well, as far as I know, they suspended the purchase orders through the proper channels in August, I believe it was, regarding the turnout suits for the firefighters and the bulletproof vests for the police officers, which you think would be something we could spend money on, we could spend all that other money. We spent on all kinds of trash. We can definitely take care of those first responders, because that is, in fact, putting your money where your mouth is, because that's what I did. But yet, that bill has not been paid by the city for some reason, even though we could pay all kinds of outlandish fees to all kinds of damn people, and I'm saying, ta-da! So I'd like to see that get paid immediately, because that's asking. Now, that's asking. What you're doing is getting there. What that's being done out there, that's asking. To keep people from getting safety because you have a federal problem is your problem. Don't put that on those citizens that are out there being our first responders, that is it. That's, that's a travesty is what that is. And that, quite frankly, angers me quite greatly. So I would hope that we can get that thing paid. Again, if I gotta give up the, well, I already voted to give up the discretionary money, but if I gotta give it up again to get it paid, I'd be happy to do so.
Councilman Bolin, hold on, me, no. Councilman Bolin, look at me, look at me.
He's not.
Okay. You gave this money up last fiscal year, right, when you had?
That's correct, at the end of the fiscal year.
At the end of the fiscal year, when you had it and when there was there, you know, no crisis happened.
Yeah, no crisis was going on in August.
Okay, so is your motion that this, this invoice be paid by November?
That's what I already did. I mean, I shouldn't have to make a motion to get it paid.
No, I'm saying, because they don't have any...
Well, then I'd make a motion that be paid by, we'll see.
November thirtieth?
Uh, November thirtieth, third of December fifteenth.
Okay.
That way, that gets, December fifteenth.
Right, December fifteenth.
That gives them plenty of time to get whatever property tax is gonna drip in in the first part, because again, we don't have any money.
We have a public safety motion, is there a second?
Can we say a second?
Yeah, after the second.
I said it.
Okay, discussion?
I'm, I'm lost, I'm lost. Can you?
Yes, at the end of the fiscal year last year, I had discretionary money still remaining. And so, you know, because we had the young man come before, it's got burned.
Yeah.
And then we're also talking about, we're gonna do this, do that. So I was just like, well, I'm just gonna take my money, what I got left in my account, I'm gonna buy some turnout suits, it's a bulletproof vest for these folks. Because it's the significance of people's money to the short form.
Right.
So I was like, well, it's not my money, I'm gonna do what we need to do and forego stuff in my order to make sure these people are safe. Because that, that touched my heart, that young man came in here burned and a long-time firefighter family. So, you know, I didn't do a whole lot, but I bought two turnout suits and then I think it was five of those bulletproof vests. Just regular bulletproof vests, not rifle vests.
Right.
So, you know, Captain Volks and I worked through that process, Chief Stephen and I was working through that other process. And, you know, they were going to their vendors to get those things figured out, get them ordered and get them in. Now, I understand that they're there, but they're not able to use because they're afraid that they may have to recall them and return them because this bill has not been paid. Now, the money was in my account, it's discretionary money, which is general fund money, but still, it was in August, so we surely could have gotten something done by, by now.
Okay.
And, and again, I, I understand that we owe people, other people money, because people who, we owe money, owe me money. So I know how that goes. But at the same time, I mean, if we are truly about public safety and we are truly about our first responders and, and that bill has not been paid and other things that are important, obviously have been paid and some things that we looked at on the, on the documents that were sent recently, those things got paid. But, but the first responders, that keeps them safe, the equipment for them to keep safe, has not been paid. And, and I think that's a travesty, because that was really not my gift. That was a gift from the taxpayers of this community, that's why, because it's their money and I did what they wanted to do and that was to use that money to get those people safe.
All right, Councilwoman Thomas?
I understand where you're coming from, Councilman Bolin. It was stated that I had some things I was trying to do discretionary, but they're saying that they're not paying any, any money out of discretionary. If you have oilies, anything you're trying to do, they pay out of that because they have the money there. But with discretionary, they say they, they're not paying anything.
Well, that is only the six grand and it was in August before the financial crisis hit.
I know, they've got...
And since the financial crisis hit, if you look at the invoices and the stuff we received, clearly the priority is not first responders from a certain perspective of the city. Now, why that is, it's not my job to figure that out. I do what I think my citizens want me to do and I would hope that others involved would do the right thing and get that invoice paid so those first responders can use that equipment. Because ultimately, again, at the end of the day, is to ensure that they return home safely to their families. So I know that the cemetery run generated a huge amount of money and they're gonna go buy that stuff directly, which will bypass all this stuff. But at the same time, if discretionary money is not there for us to use it, and I feel like this is a great use of discretionary money and then I think extremely warranted, I would hope that perhaps we could get this thing remedied relatively quickly. And I believe wholeheartedly that we will. And I believe that this is a miscommunication. I think they went brought to the attention of the Chief Executive Officer. We should have this thing remedied very quickly. I believe wholeheartedly that he wants the best for those citizens and I would hope that he would go forward and get that done. If he doesn't, then we will have to go and figure out a remedy for the situation.
All right, the motion is to move the money from discretionary funds into public safety as was requested in August, I think you said, as was requested in August by December fifteenth. The difference is, what makes the difference is the motion is that we're putting any dates on it, that this public safety equipment be purchased by...
It, it is purchased, it needs to be paid for so we can use it.
Be paid for by December fifteenth.
I believe it's on site.
So they can use it and not have to turn it back in. That's the motion, there was a second, and then we got Councilman Shaw.
Couldn't that bill be called in at one point five million, the debtness that we have?
It would be right next to the building from two thousand seventeen for Carl and Magnus Associates Design and Prizes Bank, that we never got paid for. I'm still waiting on checks from the city from sixteen.
Well, you know, you gotta understand...
I forego that, but let's get this first responder thing taken care of.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Shaw.
It's being a Alabama general fund, you know.
I said it, I said it.
And based on what we've been told, they don't pay things that is, that is priority, things that we have the money that we banked for.
Oh, yeah.
And there are a lot of things that we would love to get paid, but if the money's not there to bank, they're not gonna cut no check.
Can I respond, please?
Uh, yeah, yes, I can, I go to Councilwoman.
Councilman Shaw, if you do get a chance to review the documentation that was sent, I don't know if you had an opportunity to do that yet. If you do get a chance to see that, sir, I think you'll see that there were some things that were not as high priority, safe to human, it comes to our first responders that were purchased. So normally I would agree with you on that and I would, I would be on board with you and, you know, we communicate. But in this case, that's just not a solid argument.
Go ahead, send it over.
Send me a T E. Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think that you, I think that was used wrong, email address for you, you have the number two behind yours, I think. And if you would, if you would add, if you would add the number two, Councilwoman, add the number two behind it. You got the email I sent to you last... He got the last one. Okay, so I use that same? So use that same one. Put it on my hotspot.
He's gonna send it to Ms. Jackson?
Go ahead.
I got five, I did have one with two, so if you send it to me, I'm convinced I still have it.
And, and it is...
At gmail dot com.
Nine megabytes of data, which graphic files cost that big, but for that many documents to be that big, I have to tell you how, how much information it truly, it's a lot of it.
You need space to pull it up.
But, yeah. Oh, it would be, it would be twenty-five hundred or more, like, three thousand.
Thirteen thousand, excuse me, thirteen thousand, thirteen forty-five, twelve ninety-seven, seventeen, twenty-eight, sixteen. We seven dollars.
Three or four thousand.
It would be... That right there, he was sure we're paying some employees if we bring...
I was coming down to copy mine, but I think the company got, was copying hers. Took reams and reams and reams of paper. Councilwoman Thomas, do you have anything before we come through? Was your hand up?
It was, it was actually...
Your hand, okay, Councilwoman.
So, so Councilman, I was saying, to the point that they haven't used the finances before the, quote-unquote, crisis was uncovered and developed to pay what you deemed was necessary. Why do we think, and you voted for it tonight, that they're gonna do it again? They're gonna do anything differently with the funds?
Well, this time, all these good people out here are here to listen to.
And, and to, to Councilwoman LeShore's point, they're only paying what they deem necessary or important. So if we give up the sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, how do we, we determine what they deem necessary or important?
Well, that's why it's important to, to your point that, that you have said several times, doing things illegally conveniently. And so that, that is of the record. And so when this vote goes through, it is of the record, all right? Because this is the financial committee, not y'all. Councilwoman Bolin.
Again, all these good people out here, every one of these folks has heard all that. They know that that bill has not been paid. They know what that bill is for. They know it's to help the public safety and to keep these people safely and turn back to their families. Now, all these good citizens here, and I'm a marketing professional, I'm telling you, do not make me mad, because I got all these tools in my disposal to do stuff and I will push very hard to make sure that this bill gets paid. And I do believe wholeheartedly that it's just a simple oversight and it will get remedied very quickly when it's brought to the mayor's attention. I do think that's the case, so I'll go there and say that much. But if not, then the good people here are well up like they have for Christmas and everything else and Cer- Ceramics building. And, and, I mean, they're gonna come get somebody out of this building. It better not be me. They're gonna come one day before to get some of these folks, I'm telling you. These citizens are mad, these businesses are mad, kids are mad. I mean, it's a disaster. So these folks heard it this time and I think that's what makes it different. That's what sets it apart. And I think there's an expectation from all these good folks out here and the folks in the listenership land that that bill gets paid. I believe it will be.
Because it was just an oversight. Madam Thomas, one call, please.
President Pro Tim Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin.
Of course, yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes, it was just an oversight.
Councilor Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman LeShore. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
All right, and, and like I, I told you all, it's not, this is, you're not listed here what your, what your committees are and, and bear with us, we don't have an administrative assistant. So what I'm gonna do is, uh, you just tell me what your committee is and, and tell me that you have a report and I will go.
I, 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 did you a close one? Okay, yeah, I'm, uh, my committee is, uh, Recreation Department. At the moment, we don't have one. Uh, I'm just hoping, uh, that I was just waiting, uh, on Jerry Jackson, that they did get the opportunity to finish up on the, um, um, the playoff. Uh, we did get the nation from, not this Michael Johnson, but the professional Michael Johnson. But I did tell him that I was sponsoring the trophies. I wouldn't let them, that, come back to me on that. I was sponsoring trophy. He sponsored the umpires. Uh, what they did, so I thank you. So you complete them. I should, I thank you completely. That's, that's all I can say right now about that part. Also, um, um, I, first of all, let me, let me thank you all, all you all with the phone calls, uh, for the hugs that you gave me as well as the cars that I received on passing my father. Again, I thank y'all from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate y'all on that. And sorry that I wanted to attend the meetings that I missed. It's because of that.
No apologies.
Thank you so much on that. Also, I see, uh, the two young couples just left out here. I wanna thank them for the Thanksgiving dinner. That, uh, this young man came before me and put some in my hand with a nice handshake. I wanna thank him, uh, for what they did, uh, on November 22nd, uh, Thanksgiving Day when we fed, uh, close to a little over two hundred people. Uh, it was great. I'm so grateful for that. Also, I wanna thank Mr. Earl Ash, uh, for donating me, uh, two cases of turkeys. I also wanna thank, um, uh, all my volunteers that helped me out. And most of all, I wanna thank Pastor Gerald Starward at, uh, Selma Community Bible Church, where they did all the cooking for me. And, uh, I mean, they did all the cooking and, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to get out to bring the place like I used to, because what made me feel so good, because the people sat down and ate in the building. And, and that really made me feel good. So I did get opportunity to go out to pass, uh, dinners like I used to. So, uh, and thank you, uh, Reverend, uh, Miller for coming there. Uh, you didn't want, I had to make you take a plate with you. Thank you also for what you did. I'm thinking about what they did. It was awesome. I really appreciate that. And again, that was my birthday, but I just, I do this on my birthday, because it's more, I felt more passionate doing it than trying to celebrate it. Also, I just wanna say that, um, on December 8th, we supposed to be having the gun buyback, uh, but we're gonna have to postpone that because I was gonna ask each councilperson for the donation out to discretionary, which we don't really have much on that at these moments. So, uh, uh, we will be getting back, trying to get some of the churches and some businesses to help us, but we got to get these guns off the streets. We got to. I mean, even if ever we just get five guns, it's good. Uh, we got a little hundred dollars so far with the Brown Chapel Church with, uh, uh, A and M Churches, uh, along with, uh, Reverend Bill Strong. And what we're gonna do, we're gonna go out and research and try to get some more funding to help us with this, um, uh, gun buyback. So we, we, we will announce the date on, on that. But other than that, I'm gonna say good night. Thank you all for all what you have done. Uh, again, we not up in an argument. We just, you know, kind of, to agree with him. And, um, thanks for it, but I'm just trying to work together to make Selma a better place to live. Thank you.
We got a question about your.
Councilor Johnson, what is the, if somebody were to give to the gun buyback program, is there a certain designation that you're gonna check?
Well, they can make the check out to Brown Chapel about the church. But, A, A and M, sorry. Brown Chapel, Chapel, A, M, E, church. Yeah, so that's, you know, to them and I appreciate it, but we, we're trying to get these guns off the streets, uh, soon as possible. Thank, thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Randolph, what's your, um, committee? Captain equipment.
Yeah, Captain equipment. Um, I know the, um, the cemetery department has the vehicles that they can play as suburbs. Are we gonna bid it out? I don't want them just sell the truck to their homeboys or whatever. We need to take some bids on those vehicles.
Yeah, tonight we said we're gonna, um, discuss the process and we voted on the surplus, but we said we'll discuss the process in a work session.
Okay, okay.
How we're gonna do it.
Okay, 'cause that, that's a, that was a sign for me. And, uh, uh, I guess, uh, anybody had a, closure marks, anybody had a great, um, Thanksgiving and all that good stuff and, uh, I had a great Thanksgiving. I've been off work for the last two months and I'm wanting to get my first day back on the job. Uh, I totally had a, put me a, a ride. But anyway, I just wanna thank everybody and thank all the city employees. I know it's hard and I, I just wanna just, uh, what, what's your one?
The B. Speak up.
Bertha. Okay, I just, you know, I just wanna say to you, I, I'm sorry that the mayor laid your husband off and you can't get your diabetic medicine. But I wanna tell you this, don't go without your diabetic medicine. You call Sam Randolph. I just, I, I, I paid for it, man. I'm serious. You, you call me and I pay for your diabetic medicine. Uh, we might be on the same counter, man. I get mine from the VA. Y'all can hear this on.
Hey, watching, watching you say.
But, uh, I'm, I'm serious. And, and the medicine, you, you got, man, don't, don't go without it. I'm, I'm gonna give you my phone, um, uh, when, when, when we leave here, y'all, y'all call me. 'Cause I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, that's, that's a sad situation to put a family in, uh, through a hard time like this.
Don't you mad because you won't go without.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Child, is that the annual report? That's the annual. So we have a question about your report.
I wanted to tell, uh, uh, Ms., what's your name?
Yeah.
Bertha.
Ms. Bertha, we have, uh, um, it's on Broad Street. It, it pays for you, you know, if you need, need help with your prescription, you can go there. You don't have to worry about that. They would give you, they will, they would give you your medicine. So you, you go down there so you can get your medicine. It's on, um.
They just moved Cross from, uh.
Cross from Tappanak, historic Tappanak.
And she'll help you. That's my mom.
They will give you, you would not have to worry about your medicine. Anybody that takes medicine that don't have it, that you, you don't have your health insurance, you can go right there. They give you.
It's called Healthling.
That's Carl Bolin's mother.
Yeah, go ask for Joanne Bolin. She'll help you out. She works there and tries to ensure people like yourself and others get the medicine they need to survive. And that's what she does. Please go by her here immediately.
Is that what I meant to mean?
Yes, 'cause I do have the brochure for her.
All right, all right. Thank you.
We have a great search. And, and in regards to the Edmenites, that's part of the Edmenites mission as well, so. Uh, closing remarks, uh, God bless this poor city, um, as we move forward. I mean, the documentation we received, uh, everybody up here is just trying to do what we can to figure out the solutions to the problems we have. Again, I, I think their solutions are inherent in the budget. I do think there's more money to cut. I know there's more money to cut. It's not, not, not a thing. It's not thought. It's not a belief. The reality of it is there's more money to cut. Uh, I think we should do it like the households, like the employees that we laid off. They're gonna have to look at their, their finances, just like any business, anybody else does, and determine what's, what's the most important things to pay for, what's the priorities. Um, I think that there is money to cut, uh, and, and I want to make sure that we get that money cut. I think we, we got to the point where we, we crossed the tape with the budget getting passed. It was fraught with peril. But, uh, I think psychologically, it was a good message to send to the city to show we could do that. Uh, because the psychology of the situation is just as important as the financial ramifications of the situation. Uh, look at the morale of the city. Look at the, uh, the folks. Look at the responses you see. Look at the conversations you have and listen to what they're saying. Uh, you know, the morale of the city is suffering as well. The economy is suffering as a result of people not confident in what's going on here in the city. And it will continue to affect businesses and livelihoods of folks beyond city employees and city employees we currently have on, on site, as well as folks that are up here trying to make a living. So I, I think it's imperative that we do figure out some way to get our heads from our proverbial high knees and start to work together. Again, you know, my life with the mayor has not been peachy keen. Uh, him and I have had our difficulties in the past, but I'm the one to put that behind me to sit down with him and see if we can't come to a conclusion. I do believe that the man has, uh, a good heart. I do think in some of the past conversations we had before, we had our little break, uh, would allow us hopefully to get back to work on, on discussing some of those things and those things were cost-saving measures that he agreed with at the time. Uh, he had some suggestions that I thought were good suggestions as well. Uh, so it'd be nice to get back in touch, sit down, see if we can't figure out some way to work together with the executive office, uh, from the legislative office, because again, until we work together, we ain't gonna work. I think the ADA's positioning statement is we work together, together we work. Well, we ain't working together, so we ain't ever gonna work. So I do hope that we can, again, remove our head from our proverbial high knees and figure out some way to start working together, 'cause we don't. We're gonna have more folks out of work. We're gonna have more businesses going down. We're gonna have bigger problems. We're gonna have more crimes. We're gonna have more guns.
That's right.
Uh, and so, you know, it's imperative. It's imperative that we go into the Christmas season, if we can have the spirit of forgiveness and try to work together, I think that's something we should all do. We are Christians, and a lot of us say we are, that we should be able to turn it in the cheek, put the guns behind us and start working together. And I would hope and pray that every one of us will take that attempt. Again, I, I think that's all we can do is to try to do the best we can. If we meet with, with, uh, with problems in that process, then we take another tack. But I'm gonna try to do that again. I did that with Michael Johnson's help. Uh, weeks ago, I went down there, met with the mayor briefly just to talk to him, uh, at his radio show, um, and just try to put the past behind us. Because again, if we don't work together, nobody's gonna get back to work. So, uh, so that's, that's what I suggest. That's what I hope. I hope we can do that. I pray for that every day. Ask people to pray for that, pray for the citizens' community, as I continue to pray for us as well. Thank you and have a good night.
All right. Councilwoman LeShore, your committee?
Yeah, I'm part of which, uh, which our services are. They have a many, part of which General Services Committee, however, I am keeping up with their experts and with the skeleton crew that they operate on, I want, I want the men there for doing a good job. Uh, the trash of the city is becoming minimal. Uh, I, I, I do see the trash trucks running throughout the city and I wanna thank them for their hard work of trying to get up the trash that at one point has overtaken our city and made it a crisis. Uh, I wanna thank, uh, uh, Mr. Ray Hogs, you know. We had, uh, sent a message to him that the streets that have been torn up by the contractors and the contractors have long did the job, but the streets remain torn up. We request that they come back and resurface. And I am beginning to see that as being done as we speak and I'm gonna thank him for giving the message to the contractors. And, and, and of course, we know this is a season where millions are easily dead every day and it's been upon the weather. And with weather setting upon us, you know, it's gonna be some, uh, fidget days where, uh, streetwear is not visible, naturally we understand that, but as long as they keep us on the radar, that, and as long as they know that we want our streets repaired, our neighborhood, that's the main thing. Uh, you know, I do, uh, agree with my colleague down there about us needing to work together. And I hope and pray that whatever opinion, that position that we have, that don't harden our hearts against each other. And I'm beginning to feel that some of us, uh, don't particularly like the position of first thing and they take it personal. I know I don't. And I hope and pray that you don't either, because we all are elected officials. We all have a position to take and all of our positions is not the same. We must understand that we must be able to disagree and be civil with each other without being mad and without harden our hearts. So I'm gonna ask that whatever position you have, you know, you take, I mean, I respect it. I'm gonna ask that you, uh, be the same for me. I'm gonna say this, I am disappointed, to say the very least, that my colleagues who had an opportunity to show some real meaningful Christmas spirit and, and, and allow a few families. As I said before, every summer, we have four to five hundred children that come looking for us on the job. The city cannot afford all five hundred jobs for those children. But at least twenty to thirty children gets a job. Like, that's all I was trying to do, attempt to get some families to put some smiles on some children's face on Christmas Day. And of course, the decision has been made and I respect that. And I'm not gonna hop on that and avoid. The citizens know who, who supported and the citizens know who did. Now, it's up to them to be judgmental and I just hope and pray that they understand your organization as I did. So once again, I'm gonna ask that, uh, that you all be, uh, visible with your surroundings and that, because crime is on the increase. There's almost killing in Selma every day. Yes, but it ain't just in Selma. I'm, I'm everywhere. And, uh, but we are all concerned about the city Selma and rightfully so. So we need to do what we can to suppress the crime. I wanna thank my colleague, Michael Johnson, for, once again, organizing the buyback. And we hope it is successful. The more guns we get off the street, that gun will not be able to take the vice off the innocent person. And in Selma, what I'm finding out, is all of the innocent people that get killed. The people that are being shot at are being able to escape and not being harmed in any kind of way. But it's the innocent bystander that takes the bullet. And that is going on for too long in the city Selma. And I, I'm under the understanding that there's the fellow president, fellow law firm president in Selma, and I welcome them. And I hope and pray that they put the cap on the criminal element that basically taken over our city. So that's, uh, Pro Tim, uh, that is my, um, closing remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman LeShore. Councilwoman Jackson, what's your committee?
Um, I think I'm still children and families, or maybe I wanna be.
You are. You, you asked to, to remind.
Okay, maybe I, maybe I wanna be. But, um, I want to say, repeat something my uncle said to me the other night and I had a wonderful opportunity to spend several hours with him. He's older than my mom. He's seventy-one this month. And, um, he said to me, he said, "Baby, I'm of the mindset that I'm not always right, but I'm never wrong." And, um, sometimes, you know, I feel like that we're in that same position. But at the end of the night, the end of the day, we have passionate discussions, passionate arguments. I just believe that, um, working, and I've seen this and grown, um, and matured in a way and, um, because I've seen it so much in the, in the courtroom, that the defense attorneys and the prosecution, um, differ. And they have, um, arguments and then they go to lunch together after the trial is over. And they're working together the, the next time. So just because you see us, um, having passionate debate about a subject doesn't mean that, uh, we don't care, love and have concern for one another. We're passionate about that subject. But we're passionate about people as well and, and, um, we are a body. And we want to operate as a body. Um, sometimes your, your left hand hurts and you have carpal tunnel, like I've experienced, and, and you have to follow your right hand, you know, your left hand. And so there are just so many things that, uh, we have to do. But I think at the end of the day and fundamentally, we agree that we want to see Selma prosper, that we want to see them in a better place. Um, I love working with these men and women that I don't always agree with, um, but I believe that has a desire to move Selma forward. So Jolie brought me this out here and it was Councilwoman, um, um, LeShore's recommendation that we get it framed and put it up under my. I don't think we need to do that. I don't think we need to do that, but of course she wanted to show everyone her sculley pictures. Um, and so thank you, thank you so very much. Um, I wanna remind everybody that we do have a parade, um, this weekend. Um, I think I'll let Pro Tim speak to that, which she has an opportunity to speak, because she's actually spoken with, um, Ms. Smithly and has all the details about the, um, lineup and things of that sort. But I wanna remind you, come out. I did see some, um, as I was going to court this morning, about eight forty-five, I saw some wreaths going up with some lights. And so I, I feel better. I really sighed relief, um, and because, because my baby, um, we, we talked about that, um, this, this weekend. She noticed that we didn't have lights. And I said, "Well, they, maybe we won't put them up as early this year." You know, we don't put ours, our, our, um, tradition is to put them up after the Christmas parade and that's what we do when we go home after the Christmas parade. We put up the tree and we make hot chocolate and then have popcorn and raisins and so that's our little tradition. So I said, "Maybe they're developing a new tradition." I didn't wanna say, "We may not have them." But she, she noticed where are the lights and so, um, I'm so glad that we could work together and get. um, I'm so glad that we could work together and get that done to the citizens of War Three. Please know, I hear your cries, I have your concerns, you have my number, if you don't, it's three, three, four, two, six, seven, nine, seven, three, seven. You don't have to edit that out, um, please have my number, I want you to have it, text me, um, or call, don't call me from a landline, because most of the time, I'm in court, and I'm saying, "Text me, I'm in court," um, and so I, I can't give back, um, with you immediately, but I want you to have my number, I want to hear your concerns, and know, just because the work is not being done, it's not, because we're not working hard to try to get it moving in that direction, um, I've told you all at our last meeting that my focus will be on the finances, I'm holding true to that, and anyone that can provide any assistance, Ms., um, ma'am, please do, um, provide me with any assistance that you, um, can, and, um, I thank you, good night, and God bless.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, uh, I'm, just wanna give a little brief, uh, delay to Dallas Academy, no, definitely still waiting to hear the information, we're waiting here from, um, documentation from, uh, the B I D to continue, and, uh, I promise you that, uh, I will report to you all the information that I get on that, it's in the process. The last, uh, information I got through the insurance company, me and Corey, from date one to date now, was the last report I got, was on the eleventh and the twelfth of twenty eighteen, where that is Sean Van Dyke is supposed to be, uh, getting, uh, a B I D. And, um, I'm, I'm gonna give them a chance to, to do what they have to do, and then I will follow up in a postscript probably by the first of January, I should give you more. And also, I want to say this to the, the families, the deceased families in my ward, the families that have lost their, their loved ones, um, you know, Thanksgiving was a day that people would get together, families get together, eat and enjoy, and you know, it was going good, and, um, some things happened, and some of those people lived in my, in my area, and also in Sam Randolph area, and some of them have to be members of my church that lost a husband, and to this, this devastation that happened. And also, one of my family members in my ward that lost their son, the young man that was on the drive. And I want this family to know that we're praying for them, we're praying for both of them, that, uh, none of us can say how they feel now, but we know that God is with them, and they have people that are out here that, that really care, so I just want people to know that, um, gun is not the way, you know? If they know the twenty-third Psalm says the Lord is my shepherd, you don't have to worry, you don't have to worry, 'cause if anything on your mind, uh, you got an argument or you got a dispute or something, you should be able to go to somebody, try to, try to talk with somebody, because for the last couple of days, that's all we've been hearing, gun down, shooting, somebody young. So it takes the family, it takes our family, that we have people in our household, we have to talk to them, we have to show them that this is not the way. Sometimes we gotta turn another cheek, people can make you mad, but, uh, sometimes you have to turn your cheek and walk away and talk to the Lord, because right now, all we can do is to sit in Selma, you know, and people say churches need to get together, but it's us, we need to get together, we need to talk to the people in our household, we need to talk to them and encourage them to, they need to change their ways with these guns, because we, we are killing innocent people that are not even, the bullet don't even be for, they just end up in the wrong place. So I just want people to know that, uh, all of our hearts are church up here, and it's on our mind, and I want us to continue to pray for this city, that we come together and put these guns down, 'cause we, we just taking innocent, like we haven't buried, we haven't buried none, one of them yet, and we got four, five funerals got to go on this week. So I just want people to understand that we need to think about it before we, before we pull the trigger. And I want to say to everybody, good night and have...
Thank you, Councilwoman, um, just briefly on the parade, and you all have one final word on the meeting for December. So, um, you will line up, we will line up at the St. James, going back to the original position at nine o'clock, but those of you all who are in the lineup, and you have a letter that tells you to perhaps go to the school of Discovery, you are to go there. But council members meet over, uh, like in the past, at the, um, St. James Hotel area, at nine o'clock AM. The parade is scheduled to begin at ten o'clock AM and at the usual round. Uh, now we need to cast a vote, somebody to go home, on whether they're having, uh, one meeting or two in, uh, December. What is the pleasure of a council?
One meeting is, uh, nine, two, seven.
All right. All right, any discussion, roll call.
President Pro Tim Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngler? Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LeShure?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to dismiss? Oh, yeah, refreshments are in the bag in honor of attorneys known, uh, who are